I just wanted to reiterate that I agree with what Mr. DeBruul said about the process being important, that commissioners were excluded from the process of appointing members to this task force as well as citizens. There was no open application or energy process as is the normal procedure for the commissioners and for task force of this sort and other boards. I would also like to mention that it shows in this room, we've already had at least one person volunteer to be on the task force, that there are people who are interested, that vacancies will not be a problem being filled, as Ms. Frost had indicated earlier. I would also like to, to be noted in the minutes, that I'm volunteering to be on the task force as well as a subject matter expert. My master's degree in economics, my 150-page master's thesis was on energy policies at the local level and the effect on consumers of that energy, whether they're businesses or residences. And I did work for the Consumer Energy Council, American Washington City. So I think it's important to have independent people on this commission, not just those with business interests in the solar industry, as well as the nonprofit interest also in that industry as well. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else want to speak after this gentleman?
All right, my name is Andrew Sluter. I'm the pastor at Bible Baptist Church. I'm not here to talk on this issue. I really don't have a stance on it, but I just kind of wanted to point out, listening in on it, and kind of the different things that were going on, and I think I speak for both sides of all arguments and viewpoints when I say this, is these kind of things and the lack of transparency in certain politics and certain policies and certain things that are going forth, are why the people have a distrust for the government, from local all the way up to federal. It's these type of hidden agendas, hidden interests, why, I mean, I had no idea about any of this going on, and trying to pick up on a little bit that idea, I automatically found a distrust for the things that was going on. Not saying that the energy thing isn't good, we need cleaner energy, we need to figure out all those things. You know, I'm not an expert on them at all, so I'll leave that up to the experts to argue about all that stuff. But it really shows how, how do we, how do people become distrusting of their local governments? And why do we say that there's so much, it's things like this. Hidden agenda, why are we, why are we self-appointed people to this task force? You know, why is it that our own commissioners are not hearing about these public meetings? Why is that? There needs to be transparency. This thing sounds as clear as mud. And I'm sure that if there, if there's a lack of transparency in this, what other things are there, is there lack of transparency in for both sides, everybody? So I'll talk, we'll have some differences later on on the social issues. But I think I speak for everybody, that it's these kind of things, why we distrust our local governments, why politics plays such a big, like, why, I mean, our tax money, regardless of how you see the tax pay, regardless of you think we have to pay higher taxes, whatever, our tax money is going to fund things like this and to fund us having the, we're paying your salary right now to be here. And it's really, really frustrating to me that when I paid my taxes, that my money's going to commissioners that are being, listen, if you have an agenda, that's fine. If you have a stance, that's fine, we're always going to disagree on things. But be transparent about it, be open about it, be straightforward, all right? Bob Jones, Sr., was a preacher back in the 20s, he said, "Plain speech is easily understood." And truth, excuse me, simplicity is truth's most becoming guard, all right? We need transparency, it's things like this is exactly why we don't trust local governments and why, and why we're so frustrated with politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Anybody else want to?
All right. We're back to commissioner discussion. If we have a motion to amend the resolution to basically delete the whereas's and... You go ahead and repeat, Commissioner DeBruul.
Well, you know, I'm okay with keeping in there number five and six, as I currently are. And of course, one, two, three, five and six.
In the spirit of transparency, why don't you read what you'd like to delete, so that people understand?
No problem, sure. How about I read what I think should be included? Whereas Bunkham County adopted a resolution regarding Bunkham County Energy and Tenness.
Hold on, are you, we can read it. Tell us what you want to change, I think you should remember. And you can summarize, you can summarize, I think.
Well, the summary, the...
Madam Chairman.
The summary was to pull out all things that have these preconceived notions attached to them. Jason mentioned these two sections that are, were included from the Energy Commission. What should be removed, whereas the city of Asheville, Bunkham County, due to energy progress, are committed to working to delay or avoid the construction of additional fossil fuel power, combustion turbine, electricity generating facility at the Asheville plant site in 2023. And whereas supporting a clean energy future will foster protection of natural resources, help mitigate climate change and still take the road in the energy innovation region. And whereas the task force will engage with our community to provide cost-effective services, programs and economics they value, and expect through investment in clean and innovative ways to power Western North Carolina law keeper race competitive. Now, again, for clarity, this is about process. This process started out flawed, and so now we're dealing with a flawed product. My, so we need to strike out those preconceived notions. We need to insert that the Board of Commission desires input and advice from subject matter experts. And then we need to open the board up to public application. We need to not appoint the people who are slated to be appointed, who haven't been interviewed. We need to allow the public and any other interested, and even these guys that are listed, they can apply, open it up, let the public apply. If we don't do that, we are setting a terrible, terrible precedent.
It's to strike the language that she just read, replacing with some of the other language that she just spoke up. Can you second that motion?
There's been a motion by Commissioner DeBruul, as mentioned, by Commissioner Belcher to delete the whereas's she referred to, and replace that with an "I" as input and advise, and have a public application period, is that just a... You have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion?
I guess just the last comment I would like to make about, about the process, because I just, you know, I just disagree with some of the, some of the things that have been said. You know, I remember, it was, we're all getting there in the years, probably time goes by, but it was, you know, it was over a decade ago, and we, and not that we've solved all of our problems, but, you know, the good thing is that sometimes we really do make tremendous progress on issues that we face as a community that seem like, you know, you're never going to be able to make a real difference on them. A little over 10 years ago, we had much worse air pollution in Western North Carolina than we do today. We had our whole generation of coal-fired power plants, which generate the vast majority of the electricity that we use in our homes and in our economy, comes from coal-fired power plants, and none of them had advanced, modern pollution control done with. And a lot of the, a lot of that pollution blew in from other areas, but we also knew from the studies that a lot of that pollution was from the power plants here in North Carolina. So there was a, there was an effort at that time to come together and say, we should, you know, we should clean up the state's coal-fired power plants. It's going to require a big investment in scrubbers and SCR technologies. And at the time, there was a lot of fighting between the environmental community and the electric utilities. And it just seemed like it would just, it was just going to be one thing, people just fight it out and never gets solved. But at that time, a group of people from the environmental community and the medical community, including people from like Mission Hospital and other people in the medical community, met, had meetings with elected officials, and said, "We need to pass legislation to address this problem, because it's hurting our people, it's hurting our mountains." And people sat down and they thought about what to do about it, and they realized, there is a solution here. We have to install these pollution controls on the power plants. And I remember Senator Martin Nesbit said to me at the time, you know, "But what we have to do is, we have to go to Duke, we need to talk to Duke, we need to figure out how to make them a partner in this effort." And, you know, I was younger then, maybe a little bit more naive, but I thought, you know, that's never going to happen, we're just going to fight about this, right? But he was a lot smarter than I was, had a lot more experience than I did, and he had ideas about how to, how to make this happen. So he sat down with Duke, he got, he got the environmental community, Duke, together in meetings, and out of that was born this whole legislation, the Clean Smoke Tax Act, that no state in the country, it wasn't California, it wasn't Oregon, it was North Carolina, was the first state in the country to pass this kind of legislation, to clean up the power plants, and we identified a way to pay for it that Duke could support, and it was good for the ratepayers. You know, you can say that people from the city and the county and Duke should not sit down and try to think through solutions to this stuff, is that, do we really take that seriously? Are people really saying, "I don't think people from the city council and the county commission and the environmental community should get together and try to figure out some of these, some solutions to these problems that we're facing." I think that people do want us to do that, and there's no conspiracy there. The, the goals of this commission are, would be controversial only amongst a group of people sitting up here, frankly. So I feel good about this process, I really do. I think it's the kind of leadership that our community wants, and that's my two cents on it.
So, to be clear, the public process is now, this is when it's starting. So this is, this is when it is happening. Public starts now. You can't magically begin in the middle of a creation, so, anyway. So just so you know, nothing's, nobody's been left out of anything. I mean, Parkers wanted to ask a question, that's the question that the task force will be asking, is what the incentives are. You've got to have the task force to ask, answer their questions. So I think that, and this is not a board, this is a task force, there's all sorts of precedent for this, perhaps not for the people that sit on this board, but we did a city-county flood reduction task force, they came up with great suggestions of how, what we were going to do in our community to, for the next flood, to reduce it. We had an energy sustainability community, the same thing, the same thing. I sat on that board, it is, it was a task force. And I, I just think it is incredibly sad that we choose to use our, our public stance to scare people, to make people think that there's something hidden, and there's something scary, and there's something out of the way. It's, that, and you know what? If people, if folks believe that, I'm very sorry, I'm happy to talk to anybody, but I'm not going to, I'm probably not going to change any of your minds. So let's just be honest with that. The folks that don't trust, some of us now are not going to trust, no matter what we do. So this is not, I, I don't, I don't believe it really is about processes. I believe it's about sowing, you know, fear and division in our community, and I think it's really cynical, I think it's really sad. And this is the part of the public, where the public steps up right now. And I, I appreciate the clarity of what would be taken out, and I do think that those are important paragraphs for, for no other reason than that, like, we don't get to be in charge of everything. This is a collaborative effort with Duke Energy, who we hear is the largest taxpayer in this, in the county, and also the city of Asheville. So, you know, if you feel uncomfortable with it, for, for whatever ideological reasons, I totally understand, don't vote for it. But for goodness sakes, don't make it sound like there's some terrible conspiracy happening, because that is just, that's just bull.
Providing transparency.
That's a dishonest presentation of what is happening. And the transparency is happening right now, good, bad, or indifferent, this is what is, what is going on. And if you, if you've got issues, we could all pick up the phone and ask. This was not a small select group, this was a representative body. We heard that Donna from our staff was there, we heard that John was there, we heard that Chairman was there. I mean, these people are not in conspiracy against, against people, I mean, good grief. So, so it was a, it was a group of folks that actually represented Bunkham County, maybe we all didn't know about it, I didn't know about it, and I didn't wake up thinking something bad had just transpired. Agreed. So I just, again, I just think we all need to take a big break, I think, and I'm trying to not think this is about political cynicism here, I'm trying to understand that people are coming from a place of fear and concern, and I don't think that as public elected officials will need to feed into it. And that is exactly what's happened tonight, it's sad.
Well, this is a public elected official. I think we should have a notice on them, but I can't help but just out of town running or something during the party. It goes back to the same thing, right? You put something forward two years ago, and it's in the second year, far as cutting, reducing 80% of our electric here in Bunkham County, far as this. The first two years, I brought to a gentleman to look at it, and it's light switches, this, 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 this. He says he would buy into that. The rest of the other $5 million, he said, "Uh-uh, I'm not buying into that, I wouldn't buy into that." And he understands business far as electric, that's what he, you know, but he says he would be more than happy to invest in the first two years while he wanted to try to do, you know, but it goes back to the same thing. Yeah, there is not transparency in a whole lot of this deal. There's a transparency even when y'all were up in the city council. You run stuff through, it's called like a lead-out for a vote, you know, you tried to change policy to a...
I have a question.
No, I don't want to talk, you can handle it, y'all, you want.
Well, I have to procedurally deal with the called question, is that wrong? That's a...
After his talking.
Okay, I have, I'm just going to go real quick, I've got, no, no, I'm going to head the call question. All right, there's been a motion for a called question. As I understand it correctly, if I'm wrong, that is the motion that Mr. Frye gave, we all heard the motions, is that right? Scratch and clear, Chair. I'm going to let some more discussion, I think this is helpful, that we need to talk about it. Do you have comments?
I got shut off in that.
No, you keep going, Frank, you have the floor.
But we, we had nonprofits stop an interstate, I think here's part of that too, right? Now it costs like $300 million, give the same part to the 26th, but to him.
I don't know, man.
This is, this, we was, we were talking, this didn't... When you're smogging up, when you're smogging up a pound, what people having to say on the interstate, that's, you know, it's no worse than what the cove was doing out there. You know, facts are, let Asheville vote, you did it in the middle of the night, Democrats, everybody. Put that together, 81% of the people in the city voted against what y'all wanted to try to do. It's for the people, there's 250,000 people in this county. And to go into the room and pick a group of people, I don't care if it's Jason, I don't care if it's you or don't do it, as far as being a commissioner, I wasn't even advised of it, I read it. You know, so I guess our side is out of the picture, but your side is in. You know, we keep talking affordable housing, but how many solar panels can you put on 5,500 acres of land that you might want to put out? So that's, that's where we're at, you know, I'm sorry, but this is just kind of a little bit of a tight reality.
That's fine. Okay, I would just like to say, you've got a mandate, you've got Duke Power, who's the main player here, obviously, and they need to cut energy, and they need to help some input from us to do it. The two big players, the two big energy users are people from the city of Asheville and Bunkham County. He said earlier that that's 90%, I think, of the seven county areas that you're trying to cut. I was asked to go to the first meeting, I went. I would never be part of something that appointed people without coming back to this board, coming back to people. For the record, I would say no one on this board, including all of the colleagues here, have routinely given me or any other commissioners reports on their appointments that we've done. That is not the way the commission works, and if, you know, not a single one of you has ever come and said, "I'm going to report on the board you appointed me to," have you? And it's okay, I haven't either, I haven't either. AB Tech Board, if you ever come and said, "This is what AB Tech's doing," Health and Human Services, ever said that, I haven't done it on the boards I'm on. It's just kind of like, you, there is a degree of trust that has to develop or not develop, where you, you get when things are big. This is big now, that's why it's on here. I, I agree that we need to have a discussion, that's why I let it go as long as I have, because it's important to talk about this, because this is an important board, and no one's been appointed. Those of you that have said you appointed in the dark and aren't, you're wrong. Not a single person's been appointed by Bunkham County. Now, the two other players, Duke Power has agreed, Duke Energy has agreed to the people on here. The city of Asheville had a public hearing and decided on the people on here. We're not bound by that. We've got, we've got a resolution, we've got to appoint or not appoint somebody, and then we either appoint or don't appoint people, other members of the board. And that's what we're facing tonight, and this is public comment. So I'm going to let anybody else who wants to continue going. It's, we can continue on, I think that's, it's a fair discussion. But the way I see it is, they're asking for help, we need to give it to them. There is precedent for task force developing this way. If it was a appointed task force or something, if it was, if it was a board that we appoint, it'd be a whole different process, but this is something that is totally different, that basically Duke Power is under a mandate from the Utilities Commission to get on the stick and do it. It's the way I understand, I don't think it's discretionary with you, that you, you know, I think you've got to do it now to get your permit approved, is that right, Mr. DeBruul?
Can't hear him back here.
Okay, yeah, go on, yeah, come on back up. A little unusual, unusual situation, I'll come back.
The, the permit has been approved, so the company applied for the program, it has now been approved. In the commission's order approving the program, it spells out specifically that we are now required to do up to 10 megawatts of solar at the Asheville plant property, as well as up to five megawatt, no, at least five megawatts of utility scale storage. But where this comes into place here is they have said that there is an expectation of an annual report that the company files with the Utilities Commission to, on progress and investments and performance of our community engagements efforts here in Western North Carolina. So it's nothing that we, we will provide, whether it's a collaborative report or our own report, we will provide that facility.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, so any other discussion? We have a motion to amend the resolution, as Commissioner DeBruul has stated, and seconded by Commissioner Belcher. Does everybody understand what we have in front of us? So this is a motion, depending on our vote, we go on to other business or other parts of this matter. Any other discussion from the front, Commissioner? All right, then I'll call a question. All those in favor of the amendment as made by Commissioner DeBruul, seconded by Commissioner Belcher, to essentially pull out the references to pre-designed goals and insert, basically, the board users wants input advice and public application, is that correct? All right, so that's the motion. All those in favor of the motion to amend the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
Motion fails four to three, or three to four, Commissioner Frost, Chairman Newman, Vice Chair Newman, Gant, and Jones against. Now, is there a motion to consider the resolution?
Second.
There's a motion to approve the resolution as submitted by the other two entities, by Commissioner Frost, seconded by Commissioner Jones. Is there any discussion of that motion?
Mr. Chairman, for, can you, are we going to interview the people who are slated to be appointed tonight?
I would recommend, not on this motion, I think, I would propose two more steps. One, to consider approval of appointment by us, which would also include whether to do, take more applications and then depend on that motion to either approve or not approve the members that the other two entities have considered. That's what I would say, do it, I think that might be...
Can you bring the other, the bottom one up to the top, or anything?
Yeah, but let's, we got, we got a motion now to approve the resolution, so let's, let's, we'll get to that one after this, this motion on the table. So right now, there's a motion on the table to approve the resolution as it has been submitted and previously approved by both Duke Energy and the city of Asheville. Okay, so any discussion of that motion? All right, we will vote on that. All those in favor of approving the resolution as submitted and as appears on our agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The motion passes four to three, Commissioner Belcher, DeBruul, and Frye against.
Chairman, I'll move the appointment of the individuals that have been presented before us to be a part of this energy innovation task force.
Okay, there's been a motion to appoint the members that were submitted to us to initiate this, to join this task force and to be part of this. There's been a motion by Commissioner Jones, and seconded by Commissioner Frost. Is there any discussion of that motion?
Get up, team Mike, we can't hear you.
I think, apparently, I misunderstood what you just said.
No, I would prefer that way, I, I think you mentioned that we should, we could do that, and then apparently Commissioner Jones picked up on that. We can, we can do, I think that's the motion, I would, I suggest that we do the nominee first, but I take it your motion, is it your motion to include the nominee, Mr. Newman, the vice chair, on the...
Yeah, the whole list of people that the city and Duke has already...
Okay, so this is a motion for everything, including our appointment, which we didn't, we didn't, we're not bound by the procedure I suggest, and this board can either approve or not approve that.
So for, okay, so let me just roll back just a minute, as I'll try to think just like that. Commissioner DeBruul had suggested, and I'm empathetic to that, that we would interview the applicants. That's what I heard prior to Mr. Jones's motion.
I don't think there was a motion for that, there was a discussion of that, and I don't recall a motion.
Did you say you were going to make the motion?
Well, a motion has been made that does both, and we can procedurally pull it out if you want to vote against it, or you can just go for the motion and appoint it as the other entities have done. And I think it's up to this board, you can do either way. All right, any discussion of this motion made the way it was?
I'm afraid if this motion passes the way it is, that we will not be able to interview the people who will be appointed to this board.
I would agree with that.
Is this board all right? Is this really how we want to do business?
I'm, I'm very comfortable with every individual on that task force. The vote against it, Mike, and I'm sorry, you're being so mean, I mean...
Why won't you interview them all? I think we get to know them, you know, we've been giving out a picture already, so, why?
Look, there, there's a lot of time today, I mean, it, I've done it in different places.
You know, I just, I would just say this, I mean, there's, I think there's, it's a fair, I said before, it's a fair question, but I think there's some fair answers to it as well, and there's two. The point is that it's not just our decision, as Chair said, it's the city of Asheville at a table, other people are at a table.
What we do tonight is our decision.
Let me just say, my, my opinion in your business...
In the effort, in the effort, I would withdraw my motion. I'm drawing my motion in the effort to try to understand, is that...
Motion's been withdrawn, is there any further discussion?
Not that I think it's wrong, but I'm just trying to understand.
Okay. All right, motion's been withdrawn, what is the pleasure of the board on the matter of the joint city, county, and utility energy innovation task force?
I moved to approve the appointments to all the members except the Bunkham County position.
All right, there's been a motion to approve all members that have been appointed by Duke Energy and the city of Asheville, except for our appointment, which I think we have, I don't know, I assume we have one, I don't know. Mr. Wallace, what was the...
And just to be, to clarify my motion, I think we should do exactly what you suggested, Chair, we should... Chair, we should separately vote for the Buncombe County appointment, but first let's point all the other community appointments, and then we'll make the final decision on, on who. With Buncombe County will have an appointment, we'll decide which, which person we vote for.
And I'll second.
Question. Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Frye.
Who picked all of these appointments? We're just gonna get one in the city, and then do, that number comes to three. There are only people coming from.
Uh, Mr. Commissioner Frye, it was, it was the group of folks that came up with the, with the list of initial task force members as a rec, as a recommendation to vote the city council and the Buncombe County Commission. You know, the, the company, the company we can live with and support, those members that we've agreed on with the planning committee, um, but just as a, just as a matter in the spirit of collaboration, you know, whatever this board decides and whatever decision that they take, the company stands willing and ready to, to work with both of our elected bodies, because it's that important that we get this right. Um, and so, the company supports this initial list of folks, um, but at the same time, you know, we're also happy to live with whatever direction we are given by our, by our elected bodies. We do want a very collaborative spirit. Um, and to the point of transparency that many people have brought up, um, I will go on, on record as saying, I think that I was the one that initially reached out to our elected bodies for help and said, you know, "We need your help." And so, if my actions in any way contributed to a spirit or a feeling of lack of transparency, that was certainly never in any way, shape, or form the intent. It was about, um, reaching out and saying, "We know we can't do this alone, we've been trying and we haven't been successful, and so we are hopeful that we have a very collaborative and a good spirited organization that will help us do some great things here in the community." So, you know, the company will, we're ready to support, we're ready to get to work, but whatever we need to do, we're happy to do so.
What is wrong with talking to the appointees prior to them being appointed? That is what we usually do. I, I am advocating, um, to foster transparency, foster communication, and, um, continuing to follow the precedent that we have seen.
This is a task force, it's not a Buncombe County Commission board, it's a collaborative effort.
All right, is there any other discussion? We have a motion on the table by the vice chair to appoint all of the individuals named, uh, other than, uh, the Buncombe County appointment, that were included in our agenda and have been approved by Duke Energy and the City of Asheville. Is there any further discussion? The motion by the vice chair, seconded by Commissioner Frost.
I did, I did wanna say that there's, there's, there's a couple of people on that list that I know very well, that I think would be, would be excellent, but, uh, Commissioner DeBrul's point, you would be correct to interview and talk about these. And, um, I don't think that's the motion, it's on the table, the motion on the table is if we, if anybody except for the county, uh, first, and I really appreciate that. I do appreciate that, um, that movement. I said, I said, y'all couldn't hear me in the back.
Right.
Jerry couldn't hear me in the back.
No, all of you need to get up close to the mic, and you're getting tired and your voice is getting low. Hey, hey, you're trying to hide things up there. Come on, put a hide face.
Once the voice gets tired, yeah, it's, it's not a function of transparency, it's a function of just working, the voice coming out, so. Um, what I said was, there was a couple of people on here that I know very well that are just wonderful people, and I, and I wanna say that there's absolutely no direction, and nothing in your direction as far as, you know, the communication, that I've never had any more open communication than with you, and you as a representative of Duke Power. Uh, but, the, uh, I, I don't have a problem, and I, I think it would be wonderful to be able to sit down with each of these people and just hear their perspective on, on what they want to contribute to the board. I don't think that's a bad thing. Uh, that was the recommendation that, uh, Commissioner DeBrul, that Ms. Newman said that she would, uh, you know, give way to. Um, but that's not the motion on the table, I will say that I appreciate, you know, the change, uh, but that, I prefer to, I would prefer to be able to talk to.
Just, it's a situation, but if we're trying to do a city-county collaboration, we'd do, if both the, if both the Asheville city council said, "We are opening this up to the entire community," and the Buncombe County Commission said, "We're opening this up to the entire community," I'll just tell you what happened, uh, 'cause we've done some similar exercises. Plus, this is a topic that people are really interested in. There's a lot of people, there are a lot of people in the community who are interested in this. I've got several applicants in the room here tonight. Um, the, um, you know, we would, uh, it would, it would take a long time, and, and, and there's, and the chances of the Asheville city council having interviewed all the people who apply to them, selecting the exact same list that we come up with, it would just be, it just would be logistically, I think, impossible, frankly. It just, we wanna have a joint Asheville-Buncombe County task force that actually gets started in the next six months, this is how it happens. And, and the city council and county commission both just opening it up to everyone and starting, you know, weeks and weeks of interviews. If it were just us, if it were just a Buncombe County task force, I would 100% agree with you, but that's just not what this is. So if we're gonna play ball with other governmental partners, it, this is a great list of participants, and we need to be, we need, I don't think you might get argue with, well, maybe you'll argue about mine, real line, but these are all great people, and we can argue about that in a second, but, um, for those reasons, I think this is the only practical way to get it started, and we need to get it started. These are hard issues, and we're gonna make a difference in the next couple of years. We can't afford to wait another four to six months to get this process going.
Jason, what has Duke, um, had approved, as far as this task force goes? What has Duke gotten approved by the state?
So, the, the state doesn't really play a role in the organization of the task force. The way that we see the task force is really as a way to reach and connect with a broader population of customers, in kind of those three things we laid out with the promotion of, delivered investment, community engagement. Um, and so the state isn't approving or not approving the creation of the task force. The expectation from the state, as I mentioned earlier, Commissioner DeBrul, is that we do, um, that we get on with it, and that we provide, and that we provide a, um, a report, the first one due at the end of next March. And so, you know, that can take a lot of different, that can take a lot of different, um, approaches, and look a lot of different ways, but that's the expectation from the North Carolina Utilities Commission.
Okay. Um, and this just struck me, as far as the appointments go, what is the schedule? How long will each person serve, and how will they rotate off, and when will they be reappointed? Have I been, I just don't see that.
I'm a simple power company guy, I'm not sure that.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, that, I'm just, you don't have to answer that.
Commissioner DeBrul, I would like to answer one question that I failed to, failed to answer when Chairman Gant asked. You said, "How many appointments would the, does Buncombe County have?" And it's really all, or, you know, there's one seat that's slated specifically to represent the Buncombe County Commissioners, um, but there are a lot of different ways that, that the commissions could look at that as well. You had asked a question about how many seats are, would you all be appointing as your representative, and that would be the, the one seat that is slated, at least the way that it is right now, the one seat that's slated for the, for.
So do we have, if, if I've seen, if I have that, I, I haven't seen it. So, what is the schedule? Is this a one-year term, a two-year term? How, will they all rotate off and on if it won't stop? Will it be scattered?
I, I wouldn't be hesitant, in fact, then, I don't know, and I guess I'd prefer that someone who's been there, I think you're trying to get things going, and you had to say everything out, I would assume you don't have terms, and people go till the task force is finished, though.
Right, till the task is done.
That's, that's the most task force.
So this would, I'm, so I'm here, these would be indefinite appointments.
Or finite, whenever they finish, I mean, you know, it would just.
There's discussion.
Same side, same.
It, it just seems clear to me that this is not ready for, there is no emergency here, you have until next March, um, as far as the company submitting to the state the requirements. Um, it doesn't have to be presented in this form. It can be, but, um, it looks to me that we clearly are, this is not ready for game time, for many reasons. Um, I, I moved to table this.
Well, we've got a motion on the table. Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion to appoint the, uh, not, everybody but Mr. Newman's proposed name as members of the task force requested by Duke Power to meet with the city and county to hit the goals that you talked about, and, and the Utilities Commission has, uh, required a report on within a year. All right, that's the motion we've got. Any other questions about that?
I'd just like to know how you picked all of the people. You know, that's, you know, that, you know, there's more people that could basically be a part of this, that have the knowledge that some of the people that, that's going here, you know. This is not giving, you know, if, if you've got Sundance involved, well, you've got other energy companies, bring them up. You know, if you've got Mountain True, finally, you got, you already have another one, them on there, so, you've got four or five, um, different ways of doing this thing, and I don't, and if Jason is okay with everybody that's there, then that should be up to him, it should not be up to the county. You should ask for a board, you shouldn't have to go through a commission. Our, the way that we've done stuff here is we've interviewed everybody that goes on board. Now we're getting away from that. You know, we had, I thought we had some kind of agreement here with us, you know, but there may be somebody else that could do the same job, and that's a part of the same field. You know, if nobody rotating off, you know, if Sundance stays there forever, or just, you know, just pulling a company out there, then Jaeger's people couldn't basically come in and try to help far as their solar company to, to help, so, you know, you kind of, it's kind of throwing certain people in and leaving other people out. That's the, that's the issue.
And I can speak for Duke Energy, Commissioner Frye, um, that was certainly never the intent in any way, shape, or form. And again, you know, I, I value collaboration in this entire process, and we have, we've tried to be, um, uncharacteristically vulnerable throughout this and looking for help, and so, um, you know, we would, you know, we're eager and ready to get started.
And I think that Duke should be eager and ready to get started, but it was brought to y'all to try to get the help, you know, and that's, I understand that, we are county and our city, but the guidance that, that I see is not quite exactly the way I do it, you know. Personally, I still think we need to look at it in our form, and give you what you need, whatever you need, but it has to be, you know, county has to agree, city needs to agree, and so does Duke need to agree. But we're, we're stuck with just a group of people that probably are very good people, but over half of them, I don't know. And that's, that's, you know, we've had people in this back room, as much as 20 of them, sitting five positions. So that's, that's, well, you know, and I understand Brownie, we don't need everybody in the county doing this either, but, you know, if you're gonna pick different groups, there's not that many solar panel companies in town, you know, uh, that you could pick one of them out of, but you don't have to just pick one, and then, then you're, you go in on the board. That's, uh, that's where I'm at, and I'm, that's where I'm gonna stay at, and I'm sorry. I mean, thanks, thank you, Duke, for keeping the fire on so that we can do this, and people, you know, see what's happening here. Uh, but we have to listen to y'all as much as we do to anybody else. No different when I spoke to you the other day, I said, "Somebody built this big solar farm out in Elisestra, who's visiting?" You said you didn't, huh? But it's big.
I went and saw it.
It is big, isn't it?
All right.
So, thank you for what you do.
No, thank, thank you very much. I think that you didn't have to even have, you know, really, you could just do this on your own, and just ask people to come. I, I think that's the opposite thing. They're the big player here, they're gonna have to make the cuts. I, uh, I don't usually like to defer to companies, but in this situation, uh, I, I feel like I will, because you have, and, and the more, it's in your interest to get folks that can really get to the person you're on. These meetings gonna be open to the public? Has there been a decision made by the group?
There is not.
At least you're still the foreman, still the baby, you say. Nope. All right, we have a motion to approve the nominees, or the folks that have been approved by the city and Duke Energy to be appointed to a task force as outlined by Mr. Wallace. So any further discussion?
Have you run any of this by, what has the corporate headquarters said about this task force?
So, the, the input from our corporate headquarters and our corporate leaders was primarily on the resolution. Um, and we provided significant feedback, and we wanted to ensure that it was consistent with the North Carolina Utility Commission order that was issued in, uh, in retirement of the coal plant and the construction of the natural gas plant. The direction that we have gotten from our corporate headquarters is, you know, they're going to be very supportive, we've already started to kind of mobilize some internal teams to start looking at some things we can do differently here than we've done in the past. Um, and they're supportive of whatever the commission and the city council want to do. I mean, they, they have asked me to kind of spearhead, um, the collabor, the community collaboration between our elected bodies. The one thing that they, that has been a fairly constant drumbeat with our folks is the importance of collaboration with our, our key elected leader, because we're going to need to reach into each one of your districts and each one of your constituents to help them reduce their energy use. And so, you know, again, I'll say that we have been involved in the development of the initial list every step of the way, and we're comfortable with that list, but at the same time, you know, we're, we're going to take our direction from, you know, our elected leaders, because we need to change.
Jason, after this is all over, maybe one thing, it's, it's not gonna satisfy everybody, but what might be nice is if y'all had like a meet and greet for people, and then you could have everybody, and, and hopefully, a very mellow, on, charged, like, people could know each other a little bit, and some of the mystery could, could go away. So it was just an idea.
We're happy to, we're happy to.
It's a good idea, it's a good idea.
All right, any other comments? All right, all those in, I'll call a question, all those in favor of the motion by Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Newman, seconded by Commissioner Frost, that we appoint all of the individuals who have been approved or already appointed by the city in Duke. All those in favor of that motion, uh, other than Mr., uh, our appointment, which is, uh, has been appoint, Mr. Newman's been appointed by the other boards. All those in favor of everybody but, uh, Vice Chair being appointed that's on that list, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries, Commissioner Belcher, Commissioner DeBrul, and Commissioner Frye against.
I'd like to nominate Brian Newman to fill.
Oh, buddy. Politics.
Been a motion to appoint the Vice Chair to the seat, is there a second? An emotion by Commissioner Frost, and seconded by Commissioner Jones to appoint Mr. Vice Chair to, uh, this, this, add up this.
Thank you very much for the, um, nomination. I, I just, you know, I've been at this a long time, but, just to reiterate, this, you know, I've read this, some people may not have heard it the first time, based on some of the public comments, but, just gonna read a public email that I sent to the county commission and the media earlier today about this question of conflict of interest. Yes, you did. Check your email. Um, "In order to avoid any appearance of conflict of interest, I am publicly stating that my private business will have no financial involvement whatsoever in any programs or projects that may come out of the Energy Innovation Task Force. Duke Energy has mentioned its interest in potentially having a solar system installed at their power plant property in South Asheville. To be clear, my company will not be involved in that project in any way." So, um, and the question is, is this, is this not a legal statement, but Jason, you, you can hear me saying this, right? So, so don't do anything with any companies that I'm involved in. Please, please don't do that.
Just been a motion and a second to appoint the Vice Chair to this, add up committee. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say, I think it is in a terrible, terrible.
I can't hear you.
Way. I, this is a terrible way to, um, conduct business.
The other discussion. I would just, uh, I would just ask, and I, I don't think I need to ask this, Mr. Vice Chair, but I would ask that you be available for any questions, any member of this board or anybody in the public. I would ask that you have this group. I would ask that you have this group in very high visibility and public access, have public, maybe if not public comment, at least public appearance, and now should be public awareness if, if this motion passes.
I'm in, I'm in, and I'm in total agreement. I don't, I mean, the question had, I don't think you'd have ever thought about that before. It never came up until you got here, but I'm in 100% agreement with everything you just said.
All right, any other discussion? The motion on the floor is by Commissioner Frost to appoint Mr. Newman to this board as the Buncombe County appointment. Any further discussion?
I would just say that I do think that as, that Vice Chairman brings a lot of specific expertise and knowledge and a broad perspective across the state and from, from industry and from the nonprofit sector, and I think we are, if, if the task force had been about an educator, we would be thrilled that a teacher would want to be a part. So here we have someone that probably knows more about this subject matter than anybody in this room, and I just want to thank you for being willing to invest a lot of time and take a lot of unfair criticism and appreciate your willingness to be nominated. And, and.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of appointing the Vice Chair to the task force as outlined, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. No. The motion carries, four to three. Commissioner Belcher, DeBullock, and Frye against. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we have four more items on our agenda. If we don't have a closed session, we're making it fine. We have gone four hours and 15 minutes. We have many people here, I assume, are inter, I don't know. I would, I would ask the indulgence, maybe to poll out of consideration for our constituents as to, I'm guessing they're here for the HB2 discussion. Would I get a show of hands if that's the case? You know, we, we, right now, on the agenda that we've approved, we are now on Gary Roberts, which has stated, waiting for this, and we also have the sale of Buncombe property, approval of the closed session minutes, and the board appointments, and we have no closed session. So, it's a pleasure from board, I would recommend that we move that up because these folks have been here the same amount of time as we have, most of them, and, and take that next, but that would require unanimous votes, that's what we want to do. So what's the pleasure from board? Okay. Would you agree with me? Is there anyone opposed to moving that up now so we'll get these folks, have their, get their, and that is one that we have said that we would take public comment on in our earlier session, so at least a couple more hours of meetings, so just be up there to sit through that. I appreciate that, and I think they would.
Come back tomorrow.
They can table the rest of the agenda.
Okay, so with that being, I will call the resolution regarding the North Carolina Session Law, and this is, I believe, Commissioner Frost.
So is there a way we can put the resolution up there? It's okay.
Those long meetings design.
So if we can, I'll read one, one part of this resolution, which is why we're here. It says, "The Board is of the opinion that the best interest of citizens and residents of the county to reiterate its support for culture of diversity and inclusion." Everyone has very strong reactions to what happened with House Bill Two. We know as a commission, we have very limited powers, but what we do know is in 2013, we felt it was incumbent on all of us to establish and continue to have a workplace that no one was ever discriminated against, to encourage diversity. And so at that time in 2013, we, we passed a resolution changing our discrimination policies to be inclusive. This board, Commissioner Jones and I can't speak for the rest of the moment, are devastated with what happened with House Bill Two. And as I said, we have very little control over what we can do, but we can say the Buncombe County employers are exclusive and we don't like racism, we don't like any kind of discrimination. We have an incredible workforce, and to me, when I saw House Bill Two pass, the first thing I thought of was how it could affect some of our employees and thought there's very little in our power, what we can do right now, but we can reaffirm that our Buncombe County employees are protected. They're not going to be discriminated against, and if they are, we'll be held to pay for anyone that does that. So that was the spirit that we brought this resolution to bear, and again, this is in 2013 that we passed it to protect our wonderful, wonderful Buncombe County employees so they're never scared, so they know they have recourse, so they can't be fired because of the color of their skin or lifestyles. So, Mr. Jones, would you want to?
I think you said it beautifully. I just, I have some comments after the call.
Mr. Chairman, how about getting it up to where we can hear back here, please?
This is a reaffirmation of what this, this commission did in 2013, and it's to reaffirm that Buncombe County has a diverse workplace and discrimination is never going to be tolerated.
All right, there's been a motion. Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Frost, seconded by Commissioner Jones. One question I have is this, as I read the law, and I've read it several times, and maybe legal conduct, this does not run afoul of House Bill Two, does it not?
This, this resolution was specifically drafted to stay away from a House Bill Two, just concentrate on what we already had on the books within county policies.
And that is permitted by House Bill Two. The counties to determine their own, defend their workforce. So I understand House Bill Two, when you go outside the workforce and tell anybody else your views of this, that becomes prohibited under our current state law.
It appears specifically directed at any local control over private employees.
Okay, but not our own employees. So this is about as far as we can go under the current laws that exist today.
Yes, ma'am.
So we can continue to protect our employees from discrimination?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, this is not a referendum on House Bill Two. I think obviously everyone, everybody in this room has strong feelings about House Bill Two. And that's, that's not what this is about. This is about reaffirming what we did three years ago that said we in Buncombe County want to protect our, our individuals, and part of that protection is sexual identity and gender, sexual orientation and gender identity. And that was the, as I, as I remember it, that's, that's the two things we had in fact then. Is that right? Okay, all right. So discussion among the commissioners, and then we're going to get public comment.
Mr. Frye, does this resolution, if passed, does it change anything in Buncombe County?
It, it does not. It's not drafted to do so, just to reaffirm what's already on the books, was passed in 2013.
Okay. And just for clarification purposes, it, our agenda item on the resolution, House Bill Two, is in the header, so.
Yeah, it's, it's also here, the resolution that we have on top of it.
Yes, sir. I mean, it says that this is pursuant to the passage of state, House Bill Two.
Yes, that's correct, because.
So that is why.
So in reference to that this is not about House Bill Two, it is.
It's a reaction to House Bill Two, because as soon as I saw what happened with House Bill Two, my first thought was Buncombe County employees and to reaffirm to them that they're still protected.
And I'm just going to go by what's on to yours, and that's what's on our agenda? Correct.
It literally says that, so I'm going to rule that it is about House Bill Two.
I don't have anything else.
It references, I don't think it references in the body of it, it just says we reaffirm what we had before, but I think certainly it says that and it speaks for itself, so it would.
I, I went back and checked to see because I wanted to be sure that something's a little there and changed, so I wanted to see, make sure that that was still in fact the case.
Okay, as published, and we will take public comment that would include House Bill Two, but again, we're not the North Carolina General Assembly and we have no power, only what they give us is the only power that counties and cities have, and I think that is under our constitution, so we will take public comment just a few minutes, as soon as I'm sure we don't have any preliminary discussion among commissioners before we start that. Hearing none, I will take public comment on our resolution that basically reaffirms we will deal with our employees the same way we did three years ago. So I'm going to ask everybody to sit on the front row, just the first, you'll be first man, and then if y'all could just sit that front row, we'll, we'll go through and everyone will hear from everybody who wants to be here on. Maybe the first two rows, let's just, let's get everybody in their place, and we'll go down the line and we want to hear what you have to say. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. You'll give your name and where you're from.
My name's Kathy Rodomrath from Canler, North Carolina.
Yeah, and can I do this, if you start timing? This is, it would probably be better for both, wherever your view on this, to not cheer and clap. I know you feel strongly about it. It probably is not real helpful to our decision-making. We, we understand that, believe me, we live here, we know, and I'd ask you not to do that, not because I'm trying to, and I know we did earlier and kind of let it go because it didn't slow things down, but I, I tend to think this might make the, a long meeting longer, and we want to hear from everybody because that's why we're here. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Kathy Rodomrath from Canler. Commissioner Frost said she was devastated to hear about House Bill Two. Well, there are women that have been attacked in public restrooms that were devastated to hear about the Charlotte Bill, or the ordinance. It, they have fear and worry about going into restrooms where men can go into. That's my only concern. There is too many instances out there and occasions where men have, you look online, you see men have went in dressed as women, were going into the restroom, and preying on helpless women and children in there. And there's a group in Washington DC, or no, Washington State, they, the women that were, these women were attacked, this group, they were attacked in restroom, and they formed a group, and it was called Keeping Locker Rooms Safe. And one of their statements was, over and over again, women are told, your abuse is not important. It's not important to fund, it's not important to protect, this is just, this is just some, some more way for us to, to know that our abuse doesn't matter, that we're not protected. And so that's what's going on. You, you look at where these laws like this have come on, the Charlotte Bill, or ordinance has come around, it's the women that are getting together. Men don't care who come into the restroom, but women certainly do. There was one occasion where a transgender young man was harassing women in the locker room, and when he was challenged on it, he said, "Well, my feelings and my rights trump yours." Well, who says so? You know, these women, who's going to protect them? They have a right, they have a right of protection and to have an expectation of privacy and safety in the restroom. And so I totally support House HB Two, and I'm, I'm thankful that they, that they went through with it. And if one, one girl, one child, one woman can be protected, it's a compliment, it was well worth it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodomrath. Yes, ma'am, next.
My name is Megan Rogers, and I wish to talk to you.
Y'all here, I can, I can.
Can you hear her?
Thank you.
Hi, so I was going to start off talking about some safety things too, and also thank you for reiterating that statement. I have a question about it eventually. The first thing I wanted to mention is that people who identify as trans are twice as likely to experience assault and discrimination, and that does not include just in bathrooms. They're also one and a half times as likely to experience intimidation, something that could very easily happen in a bathroom, in a private place. And both of those things are from the National Coalition of Anti-Violence Programming, and that's from 2010, so that's even six years, six years old. I have one question, which is, I appreciate y'all being able to protect the people that work for Buncombe County. I wonder if that includes people that work at the libraries or like state employees, that kind of thing? I'm not really sure like where that, those lines are drawn, but I would be very interested in making sure that people that work in the school systems would also be protected. The only other thing that I wanted to say was something that I wanted to actually read for most of the people that are in here. And so this is the Book of James, and it is the King James Version of the Bible. For if then come unto your assembly a man with a gold ring and goodly apparel, and there come in a poor man in vile raiment, and ye have respect to him that weareth the gay clothing, and say unto him, sit thou here in this place, and say to the poor, stand thou there, or sit here under my footstool. Are ye not then partial in yourselves, and are become judges of evil thoughts? You can muddle the drum, and you can loosen the strings of the lyre, but who shall command the skylark to not sing? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Yes, ma'am. I'll just go down the line, I'll point you, but y'all go ahead and.
Thank you, my name is. Commissioners in Buncombe County neighbors, may I please share something intimate and important, something most people do not guess about my medical history? You see, I am a female person who has become a woman through her transgender nature and experience. My doctors here in Western North Carolina have worked for years to help my body match the way my brain is wired. There are complicated reasons for this, and for my case, the science points to how I was formed in my mother's womb. Goodness, why is this relevant? Well, it's important because I use public bathrooms and change areas. Yes, I know that's personal information, and it should be, really, it should be. This was private for me, but that may no longer be the case. Some among us, mostly goal-meaning people, grossly misunderstand people like me and consider us to be a threat, even evil, just for existing as our authentic selves. Many assume God feels this way about us also. That is difficult enough, but they also want it illegal for me to be able to use the same bathroom and changing facilities that other women use, facilities I have used for years without incident. In their eyes, nothing my doctors say, nothing science says, nothing my clergy says, nothing I say, not my legal status, nothing that has or ever could be done to my body can ever amend the opinion of the doctor at my birth when I was assigned in quote, male. Do you realize I could be criminalized for life simply for using the quote, wrong public facilities? Even a minor brush with the law endangers my livelihood, my family, my special position of trust within the Department of Defense, my employability, maybe even my life. Some will say, "So just use the men's room." Well, only if you really want people to be shocked. Seriously, only if I want to put my life in danger. Ironically, I could easily subject myself to arrest for using the men's facilities because I am legally as well as socially invisible female. Please consider, decades of debate in the medical community is over, the consensus is formed. We transgender people are neither disturbed nor disordered, we are not perverts, we are just different. Each of us find our own way to live with this. Some of us are invisible to you, while many others of us are not. Trans people, excuse me, police departments around the country have confirmed that transgender people are not predators in gender segregated spaces. On the contrary, there are numerous documented cases of us being hurt by quote, normal people. Our fears are backed by tragic experience. The fears of some in the community are backed by nothing. Trans people are no less human than any of you, we are no less decent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Yvonne Cook Riley, I'm a person of transgendered experience. I am the Executive Director of Blue Ridge Pride Center, which represents Western North Carolina's gay, lesbian, transgendered, and bisexual and questioning and youth organizations. Three years ago, I had the privilege of staying in this box and asking you, the commission, to approve sexual orientation and gender education in your hiring policy. Today, you're saying we want to affirm something that you did three years ago. We're not asking for change, we're just asking for an affirmation from you, 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 and you, that. that what you did three years ago is going to stand solid by your vote to say that Buncombe County still respects the diversity that it has within its employees. And you are not going to maneuver to a small group of people who did something so interesting that we talked about tonight and you brought up so well of the, this backroom shift. Well, this is part of exploitation of a small minority of people. And it's up to this commission to say, Buncombe County, we're not going to work in this backroom. We're going to be, try and be more inclusive and everything like this. So my request is that all of you unanimously say, we reaffirm our commitment to our gay and lesbian, bisexual, transgendered community and our employment practices. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ed.
Hello, dear. I've lived in Asheville my entire life. I came out as transgender when I was, huh? Mariah Gori is my name. And I've lived in Asheville my entire life. I came out as transgender when I was 18. And since then, I have experienced more like threat, more threats of assault, more homelessness, job loss in that, in that time as being a trans person than in the 18 years beforehand. There was no, there was no, I didn't, this. I, I ask that you publicly decry this bill because that enshrines the discrimination that we have faced as a, a way of doing business. And I don't, I don't know if I can stay here. I, I really don't.
Yes, sir.
Chris looks one on. Yes, you. Can you begin? The HB Two bill don't just affect the LGBT community, but all of North Carolina. They, they have, they've been planning, I mean, businesses have been planning on coming to North Carolina, but now a lot of them pulling out. For example, Lion, it's some group that does filming, Lion King or Lion, anyway, the one that did their dancing. And they said that after this one, they will not do another either. They call this bill a year. And what's about the, it's basically a whole different discrimination law. It's not, it's not about LGBT. And it is to a sense, yeah, but it's for all of us. Because now, the way it's set up that if you have a child of a different gender than you, you cannot take them to the public bathroom with you. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Yes, in the back. Y'all come on out. Everybody who wants to talk, come on the front row.
Hello. I wasn't going to say anything, but.
Please give your name, please.
Oh, my name's Flint. But I got inspired sitting there listening to all the commentary. So I'm just going to be brief and personal. Just, my name is Flint and I am a non-binary transgender human being. This means I was assigned female at birth and socialized as such, until I was able to learn a language to understand who I am. Before I came to Asheville and discovered my family and community here, I was completely lost in a world of depression, self-hate, alcoholism, anxiety, and a string of abusive relationships. I landed in Asheville by miraculous events, and this is where I got sober, reconnected with myself, and found a home and chosen family that I have so much gratitude for every day. Since HB Two, myself, my family, my community, and home has been threatened, especially transgender women and transgender women of color. I fear for my safety and for the safety of members of my community every day. I fear for transgender and gender non-conforming youth being targeted and ostracized, bullied and abused. People who compare us to mermaids or associate us with sexual predators deny our existence and create accusations based on ignorance, hatred, and fear. I can assure you, I did not choose to be transgender, just as I did not choose my sexual identity or to be an alcoholic or to be a person living with anxiety and depression. This is who I am and I exist and we exist. HB Two is not just a bill about bathrooms. It is a bill that promotes hatred, ignorance, fear, and legalizes discrimination to a large population of this county and the state at large. I urge you to do what is right and what is just and take a stand against HB Two. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Zach Anders and I am a transgender man. I live here in Asheville and was drawn to this community for the progressive, liberal, unapologetically forward-thinking living this community offered. I had just started my transition when I chose to move to Asheville. I did so knowing that we have one of the highest concentrated populations of transgender people. I chose it as a place where I'd surely feel safe and welcome. Unfortunately, I no longer feel safe and the welcome has worn off. I am privileged enough to appear to be what society sees as a traditional white male. This is referred to in our community as passing. Passing means that my day today is much easier than some of the other members of the trans community. I stand here today for myself and for all of the members of my transgender family and all of those of us who do not fit into the ill-constructed gender norms created by our society. I stand here for those people who live in fear every day and who are now forced to question the simplest task of using the restroom. Despite the efforts of Asheville to build an inclusive community, we aren't there yet. My life could be at risk every time I need to use a public restroom. I am potentially being subjected to harassment and violence on a daily basis. This type of discrimination was facing the transgender community far before HB Two. So much so that I have made the choice to forego use of public restrooms, causing hospitalization for these choices. This has been a small price to pay considering the alternative outcome that many members of my community have faced. HB Two turns the clock back on any progress our community has made and we must take a stand. I ask and I urge of this council to take a stand against RAL. I urge you to stay true to the motto of this community, quality of service, quality of life. I urge you to keep building a positive quality of life for my community within yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Allison Scott and I've been a resident of Buncombe County my entire life. My parents and their parents are also from Western North Carolina. In that time, I have watched Buncombe rebound from struggling times in the 80s to a place that people and businesses now flock to, where constantly listed as one of the best places to visit and live in the nation. We did not get to this position by being discriminatory against groups of people in our community. Being a transgender person myself, I can tell you that I constantly worry every day about being discriminated against. But let's talk about that word discrimination. Discrimination is, because I hear it thrown around a lot, for other groups and other issues, treatment or consideration of making a distinction against a person of a group, class, or category to which that person belongs rather than individual merit. In the past month, I have never been so painfully reminded that some people see the trans community and trans people as others. I've faced people telling me what an abomination I am and how that me trying to use a bathroom is somehow making women and children unsafe. Most of this was news to me because I thought I was a pretty decent person until last month. I work, I pay my taxes, pay my bills, spend my money in the community, go to church, and brag about what a great place I live in. I can understand that the council may say, what can we do? HB Two has been passed at the state level. That would be the easy and safe thing to do, but wouldn't it be the right thing to do? Wouldn't the right thing to do be to show that we are not hateful because that people are different? Hate and fear have been used throughout our country and world's history to marginalize and criminalize groups of people. History has shown us that doing so always is always looked upon as being wrong and the people that use those tools were the ones that were actually in the wrong. Transgender people are now in the crosshairs of hate and bigotry across this state. This council has the power by saying, your employees are, have a safe place to work and will be judged on the merit of what they do and not by how they look or going to a restroom makes another person uncomfortable. When you tell your employees that they have a job or when you give them promotions, you do that because they're the best person at their job or they have done something to get to that position. Don't turn your back on employees the way the legislators are turning back on my community in North Carolina. You can send a message by reaffirming that you stand by your employees by providing a safe workplace. You will also send a message to RAL that Buncombe County is a safe place to live.
Thank you, Scott.
Good evening. Thank you for taking all of our comments tonight. My name is Daniel Best. I'm a resident of Asheville. I'm a professor at Western Carolina University and I'm a transgender man. Each day when I go to work, I have three choices about the facilities I use there. I can go into the men's room because I pass as a man and I identify as a man, but it's currently illegal for me to do so because my birth certificate has not been changed yet. Unfortunately, the same uninformed, fear-based legislation that led to HB Two guides my birth certificate process change in Wisconsin right now. So I can't get my birth certificate changed at the moment. I can go into the women's room, but I run the risk of being perceived as a man in the women's room and what comes along with that. I can also not use the facilities for my nine-hour day. This is an untenable situation for me and it's what I deal with every day. It is also untenable for the tens of thousands of other transgender, gender queer, and intersexed and queer people in North Carolina. I have heard many people speak about this bill, supporting it, saying that it's safe and it protects women and children. I have even seen signs saying, "Safe bathrooms for all." But all that they speak of does not apply to us. This bill creates an unsafe situation for many women in my community, including my partner, a transgender woman, and other transgender women. It creates an unsafe community for many children in our community, including transgender children and children of many transgender people I know. This bill creates an unsafe situation for men in my community, including myself and my trans brothers. Please do what many other cities and states have already done and lead Buncombe County in being safe for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Hello. My name is Tara Darby and I am also a citizen of Buncombe County. I was glad to hear the reasons why you wanted to bring up the reaffirmation of this opposition to HB Two. I was glad to hear you saying you wanted to bring it up because you wanted to protect individuals. I'll tell you a little bit. I came here from Florida and I came from a very, very, very discriminatory part of Florida. I actually came knowing that this area of Western North Carolina was going to be welcoming. It was going to be inclusive. It was going to be forward-thinking. It was going to be there to protect me and help me participate in life. Come here to find jobs, go to work, go to my church, just basically be here and just live my life just like anybody else. I found a lot of those things here. I found social services that were able to help me because I was not able to find work. Work was difficult. I experienced employment discrimination. I also experienced workplace discrimination. Very, very difficult doing interviews. I'm very good on paper and then when you actually show up, all of a sudden, the job doesn't exist. And then actually getting in a place and working in an environment and finding out that there's just one or two people that don't want you there. Discrimination is very, very subtle. It doesn't take a whole lot. It doesn't take a lot of steps in order for us to be acted upon and have employment taken away from us, and it happened to me. When, when I go looking for work, and I am working now, thank God, when I go looking for work, seeing an employer having a policy on their website that says, we are inclusive, we are open to diversity, we do want to protect gender identity, especially sexual expression, is very important to me. You may think that just reaffirming what you're saying is, you aren't doing very much. But for the leadership of Buncombe County to say that this is not okay says a lot to the community around you, it says a lot to employers, and it helps me have a little bit better chance of not having so much discrimination. I can tell you that it's, HB Two really affects, even here now. We're here, I'm waiting for four hours, and I'll tell you what, I went out and met Hoy and I thought twice about which bathroom to use. And I shouldn't have to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Alexis Debo. I hadn't intended on speaking to you. I'm very nervous. But I'm speaking because hearing the other one talk, I, I had to say something. And I'm totally against House Bill Two. I'm all for all of the laziness and everything, but that's not why I'm against it. When I was younger, when I was younger, I was attacked in the bathroom. It was a very traumatic experience for me. And House Bill Two will make it easier for that to happen because now I'm not going to have to find a waiter, prosthetic or anything. You can just waltz in. That is very upsetting to me.
Thank you, Ms. Debo.
That's the irony of all of this. It's called free range.
Can you just read mine?
No. It's a product of free range. Free range abuse, whether it's in our churches, whether it's in our bathrooms. You're looking at it right now. You're wanting to rubber stamp the notion. I'd like to know how you're going to enforce it. I don't know how many of these dear individuals even work for the county. That might be an interesting fact. I went to the restroom a few minutes ago. I would venture to say I had two biological males join me. Whose problem is that? Is it yours? Who's, who's the enforcers? Who's the protectors in this? I'm talking about your safety as well as all of their safety. Dan Forrest said of our action in keeping men out of women's bathrooms and showers protected the life of just one child or one woman from being molested or assaulted, then it will be worth it. North Carolina will never put a price tag on the value of our children. They're precious and priceless. If a corporation was to leave North Carolina, et cetera, let them go. I say the same for Buncombe County. No free range. You deal with your employees. I'm in a place of business. You have free range. Goodness, come on.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Anyone else, yes, ma'am, respond?
House Bill Two, Public Facilities Privacy and Security Act, which is now a state law, requires people using public restrooms to use the restroom that corresponds with the gender on their birth certificates. It protects women and children from sexual predators and it protects modesty. The bill also stops cities and counties like Buncombe The bill also stops cities and counties like Buncombe from passing their own anti-discrimination measures and personnel ordinances, setting a statewide standard of protection based on race, religion, color, national origin, age, handicap, or biological sex as designated on a person's birth certificate. The state is mirroring the federal law. I checked with Representative Paul Stam on this today. He's one of our leaders in the House of Representatives, and he said, yes, the state is merely mirroring federal law. House Bill 2 was passed in a one-day special session nearly two weeks ago, making it through the House with an overwhelming majority of eighty-two representatives voting for the bill and only twenty-six against, with eleven Democrats supporting it. Then House Bill 2 was unanimously approved in the State Senate, thirty-two to zero. Tonight, you all are going to vote on this resolution in defiance of the Public Facilities Privacy and Security Act. Even if you approve the resolution, it is meaningless and has already been superseded and preempted by state law, and those are the exact terms in the law, if you read it and if Mr. Frue has read it. The terms added to Buncombe's personnel ordinance in 2013 remain invalid. You see, sexual orientation and gender identity are behaviors, not protected rights. House Bill 2 does not include behaviors as protected employee rights. Your sexual identity is in your biology, not your psychology. Thus, I urge you to vote against this resolution and focus your efforts on correcting the protected rights in Buncombe's personnel ordinances so that they too will mirror our state and federal laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Yes, sir.
My name is Andrew Flutter. I'm a pastor at Bible Baptist Church here in Asheville. Wanted to address a few things here tonight concerning the resolution. Three years ago, I was here at the meeting, I was against what you guys did then, modestly against what you're trying to do now in passing the resolution. Several things about it. Number one, I mean, it was set by the Commissioner, excuse me, the Chairman of the Board on WOS that the bill was a smokescreen, the bathroom part was a smokescreen for minimum wage. Now, there is some things about minimum wage in there that local governments cannot set a higher minimum wage for their local governments than what is the state, but I would challenge the statements made by the Chairman that there are four, maybe five paragraphs about minimum wage in almost twelve, I think twelve I counted, about the bathroom. This was in direct response to Charlotte passing an ordinance. So the wage is not a smokescreen. The wage is simply something that was added in the bill. I'm not the legal expert there, so I don't know why it was added, but it was not a smokescreen. This was indirect. It was answering or fixing the problem that Charlotte passed in allowing men in the women's bathroom and vice versa. So it wasn't a smokescreen. Number two, this violates not only state law, but common sense. Now, there's a lot of different things, a lot of different emotions, we could say, but essentially, let me ask you this. If we were to pass a similar ordinance here in Buncombe County, then, now, I don't have any daughters, I have four boys. My boys have no business going into a woman's bathroom for any reason. They have no business being, I have no business being in a woman's bathroom. And when my, if my boys get older, which I hope to never put them in public school, but if they happen to go to a public school where the government controls, where the bathroom usage, then my boys would have the right to strip down naked and walk into the women, the girls showering and shower with girls. That's exactly what the bill would have done, or the ordinance would have done, exactly what it would have done. So, our state legislators have put that in their protection. Not only that, I'm hearing a lot of things, and boy, I wish I had ten minutes, only got forty-five left, though. Mr. Gant said there was a lot of homophobics down in Raleigh. I want everybody to make, I want to make it very clear, there's not a transgender person in the world I'm scared of. I'm not scared of one of them, okay? I'm not scared of a woman who wants to be a man or a man who wants to be a woman. Say, well, you guys hate, you guys hate. Well, nobody said we've hated anybody. That's words that you've put into our mouths. I've never said I hated anyone. Now, if you want to come, I'm not even coming with a religious issue. If you want to talk religion, I'd be more than glad to debate you about the Bible. I memorize most of it. But here's the thing. People say, well, love your neighbor, love your neighbor, love your neighbor. I love my neighbor. I just don't want to use the bathroom with her.
My name is Randy Keener. I'm a resident of Buncombe County. Some have said that those in favor of House Bill 2 are promoting fear of what we do not understand, and I think actually we understand all too well. I have an eight-year-old daughter that I'm concerned about every time I send to the public restroom alone. Because gender is truly not a fluid concept, can you imagine how the concern would be amplified if a man followed her into a restroom and there was nothing that I could legally say or do about it? All he would have to do is claim that he is a woman in his head, regardless of biology, but at the end of the day, he is still a man. A person who does not fit the description of transgender by anyone in this room could claim this state and no one could say otherwise because it is a matter of psychology instead of biology. And I asked if we can imagine being so self-absorbed by our own personal preferences that we would put them above someone else's safety. That is what this opposition is about. Not Title IX, not minimum wage, but a selfish agenda. If this law can keep even one woman, one child safe while doing nothing to trample on the liberties of others, why would we disparage it? Many are not promoting liberty today, they're promoting anarchy. If you think that preventative measures are not necessary or squash liberty, then why is it that I had to walk through a metal detector in order to get into this room? Morality has become subjective because society has lost the anchor that has held it in place. The anchor was the scripture and a spiritual transformation through Christ that resulted in what we call Christianity. For those who claim a right-leaning position on this issue, let me remind you that being a conservative is more than lower taxes, it's also about having higher values. Why do not express hatred to any individual? This resolution is a slap in the face of law, morality, safety, and common sense. Thank you for your time.
Can we limit the applause on both sides?
Yeah, let's just, let's hear a bio, let's, I agree.
My name is Matilda Bless. I am a woman, a trans woman. I was death-threaded a couple of weeks ago on the bus by someone who got upset that I put on chapstick. He got on the bus, he wanted to talk to me, I put on an earbud, and we've had such dry weather lately, I was putting on chapstick, and he started death-threading me. This is a serious thing that trans women deal with every day, discrimination, hate. I mean, already, more trans women have been killed. I can't claim that. It goes up, the transgender, murders of transgender women go, women go up each year. I don't want to be one of them, and I'm scared, I'm scared that, like, I don't, I don't pass. I can go in the men's bathroom and like, you know, it's, oh, it's just another guy. But I'm moving towards, in my heart, looking like a woman. That's who I am. Before I started this journey, I didn't know who I was. I could not feel my soul. I was so lost, and this has been a miracle for me. And it's a miracle for so many trans women, for so many trans men, and I really hope that you can keep honoring that by reaffirming this. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Ruben Espaya. I'm a resident of Buncombe County in the store. I don't have any personal stories to share here. All I wanted to do is come up here and try to crystallize some of what I've heard in the room. We've heard a lot of pain, a lot of anxiety, a lot of anger, and a lot of unspeakable fear in the room on all sides of this issue, and all of that is legitimate, all legitimate pain, all legitimate anxiety. None of that can be discarded, but what does have to be understood is that everyone in the room, on all sides of this issue, for HB2 and the resolution, or against, everybody wants to protect everybody. Nobody is advocating for women being hurt. Nothing in this resolution would promote women being hurt because there are laws in the books preventing and criminalizing abuse and abuses of all kinds, including, that will not be changed here. So I just wanted to re-highlight the scope of what it is that's being talked about here. We're not talking about changing anything, but taking any rights away from people. We're talking about the county of Buncombe affirming and leading the county of Buncombe by saying that, yes, we will protect gender and sexual minority people, and we will support their rights. That doesn't mean taking away from anybody else's rights, and it doesn't mean supporting abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Best.
Should I do a tap after something, wake you all up? Ratty, you look like you really need to go to sleep. The attorney's over there sleeping in the corner, I come, can't relate, I'm hitting him in the head. So I'll try to be brief and funny, but very, very sincere. I stand before you as the most discriminated person in this nation. Short, fat, white guy with a big belly, and I'm short more ways than one.
When it only feels like depression.
No, man, okay, we're gonna, we're trying to respect, stop time, we're trying to respect everybody's opinion, it's been a long night for all of us. Let's, let's show we're ladies and gentlemen and we respect each other and we are a tolerant community. If you don't agree with them, just keep it to yourself, you can talk about it later. If you do agree with them, keep it to yourself, you can talk about it later. I think that's the fair thing to do for a really good community.
Thank you so much, David, for stopping my time. I was about five seconds, so I need more than five, okay?
Just start again.
And I just proved, I just proved right in front of your own very eyes what discrimination is. I've been discriminated against as a short, fat, white guy. I was also discriminated against in Buncombe County. I was doing a good job as a waste reduction manager, I had a contract with the company that went by all the paper burning in the landfill, and I got fired. You know why? I was smarter than my boss, he didn't like me publishing national articles about waste reduction. And I survived three and a half years. And your personnel manager wouldn't let me file a grievance on him for coming to my office and cussing me out. So don't worry about discrimination, we all have to go through it. What are you bitching about? There's a lady back there, she and I stood the last time and argued in the home. And I knew that she was transgender. I don't have anything against her at all. This whole thing is political, just like every one of your votes have been up there. If it's not political, remember, they'll pull HB2 out of it and say, we will reaffirm our policy, period. That's all you need to say. Prove that you're not being political, David, because that's what everybody's going to say, everybody's going to know it. By putting HB2 in there, you're saying, we don't like what the legislature does, and I've heard it in this room many, many times. If you're concerned about treating people the same, make it reaffirmation of your policy. Stop playing politics with me. And I've got a very serious question. You know, I was in Georgia, and I lived in a little restroom down there, and there was a ladies' room, because you ladies take a little bit longer than us men, sometimes. You get old, you crush things, and time in there. And the other restroom had a man and woman on it. Nobody said a thing. The sign had probably been up for fifty years. And I'm going to tell you something, folks, all I want to know is where you've been going to the bathroom all your life. So this whole thing is nothing but a smokescreen and a way to capitalize and take advantage by politicians of a group of special people. And that's the truth, folks, whether you like it or don't. And people will love you and like you if you love them and like them, and don't do like that person did going out in the middle of the block there. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and here is the board.
I was growing up in the nineteen, brother and sister, and I tell this story all the time, that my dad was an old Baptist minister, and he taught us the Bible. There's a story that he preached on many times, and it was Lot down in Sodom and Gomorrah. And down in Sodom and Gomorrah is the very same thing that we're living in today. We're seeing what Lot saw down in Sodom, where the people came into the city, and who was that people? It's two angels from God. And those two angels came to visit Lot, and they wanted to stay out in the street, but Lot said, no, come in. And he had bread with them. Well, he found out that these two men wasn't just men, they were angels from God. They had a message for Lot. That message was very serious. But what happened? The people in the city, old and young, come to the house. They wanted to come in, they wanted the men that came there. They said, these men are juddies. We want them out here, we want to have sex with them. Lot pulled, Lot pulled them inside. He said, no, this ain't going to happen. And the people that came, the angels that came, they struck the people with blindness. And that's how the power of God worked. And the power of God was that it wasn't about HB2. It wasn't about Buncombe County ordinance. It was the power of God in there that showed something, that showed something real. God will tolerate. He will let preachers, he will let ministers, he will let people in here tolerate this kind of disobedience to God. At the same time, he's having mercy. But one day, the mercy is going to be drawn and the line is going to be drawn. And he told Lot to get out, and he did. His wife turned back to look and turned to fill him soft. This is not about this Congress, it's not about House Bill, this is not about the General Assembly, but when God speaks, you better listen. When he tells me to get out of Asheville, I'm getting out of Asheville because he's fixing the fire, the brimstone down on. I didn't say it's going to happen today, but let me tell you, when God speaks, you better listen. And this ain't nothing to play with. Lot put up with it as long as he could, but when God spoke to him, he obeyed God, he got out of there. And he better be glad he did, because God saved his life.
Yes, sir.
Hey, my name is Aaron Sarver. I live here in Buncombe County. My allergies tipped that off, sorry about that. Regarding the county's employment nondiscrimination policy, I'd like to give a little context to the standard being set by private employers in 2016. Y'all have all heard about Fortune 500 companies. Four hundred and eighty-four companies in the Fortune 500 have inclusive nondiscrimination policies that they've adopted voluntarily. Four hundred and eighty-four out of five hundred, that's ninety-seven percent. Few of those companies headquartered in North Carolina are Bank of America, Lowe's, Nucor, Duke Energy, BB&amp;T, Family Dollar, Reynolds American, Sonic Automotive, Pantry, Laboratory Corp. of America, SPX. The county's employment protections aren't breaking new ground. You're merely following the standards set by private businesses. Regardless, I thank you for taking this step tonight and hope you will reaffirm the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Sarver. Yes, sir.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Ross Root. I am a resident of Asheville, the city of Asheville. I'm also a business owner here. I just wanted to thank you for your time and your service. I know this is very difficult. I wanted to address some things that were said before that I don't think, really, the crux of what's going to happen if HB2 goes into effect and... crux of what's gonna happen if HB2 goes into effect and, I don't think you get it. A man, a physical man that's born as a woman, she knows she's a woman when she's born. She's trying to become a woman, she's trans. She's a woman, okay, whether she has her parts or not. A man, a woman that's transing into a man is a man. So you're gonna send a man in their head, they're a man, you're gonna send them into a woman's bathroom? You're gonna send a woman, who in their head is a woman, looks like a woman, you're gonna send them into a man's bathroom? That's what this ridiculousness is about. And on top of all that, there's the discrimination about LGBT. There's the restrictions for HB2 on the rate that you could pay somebody. It's stripping the rights from the county, from the cities, and that's what the state wants to do. In the meantime, it's, I just don't understand it, because the GOP wants the rights given to the people, which would be the counties and the cities. So it doesn't make any sense to me. But I just wanted you to have a clarity of what's going on here, that an actual woman, whether she has parts or not of a man, is what's going into a man's room, right? And an actual man is what's gonna be going into a woman's room. It's ridiculous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Root. Yes, sir. Who's next? Yes, sir.
My name is Tim Peck. The, when this resolution was introduced, it was said that it was about HB2, and then it was said it was not about HB2, and it kind of scares me that that makes complete sense. I get it. HB2 prompted a response that this resolution is, but it doesn't substantively address the House Bill 2. House Bill 2 allows local governments to set their own personnel policies. What it prohibits is local governments setting personnel policies for its jurisdiction, that is the county. If a, if a board member voted against this resolution, you would be voting against established personnel policy that is not prohibited by House Bill 2.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Any other comments? Okay, I'm not, you've already talked once, I think, once. That's all you did. Ma'am, I'm sorry. Just to be fair to everybody, not only about speak twice, I'm sorry. Any other comments to add?
Good evening. My name is Ezekiel Christopoulos. Thank you. Again, everybody for this late evening, we definitely appreciate your time. This is an important, important matter that affects many of us at a very basic level. I want to stress that there are protections in place for people who go into restrooms and are assaulted. Those protections are not going away. What you are going to do is protect those who go into bathrooms where they belong from attack. People like myself, I'm a transgender man, with, if HB2 goes into effect, when I go into the courthouse, when I go into any state public building, I will be using the women's room. I don't think that's right or appropriate. I don't think that's the kind of law that you're looking to pass. I don't think that you're, you know, wanting to stand on the side of this sort of discrimination. I think we in Buncombe County enjoy an incredible quality of life, and I think that it's incumbent upon this commission to preserve that for all of its citizens. So I'm not gonna belabor the point. We've been here for a very long time. There are people at all stages and all phases of identifying in different genders. We're looking to protect and affirm those people. We're not looking to take away any sorts of protections. We want to protect our people, we want to protect everybody who's using any sort of public accommodation, period. There is no call for any type of abuse, any type of attack whatsoever. And I think that's really what we're all here to do tonight, is to be sure that everyone's protected, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christopoulos. Any other comments? All right, then I will declare the public comment portion of this consideration closed at 9:47. Let's see. Can't remember if we have a motion, but let's see. Okay, motion by Commissioner Frost, second by Commissioner Jones. Is that right? Okay. Any further discussion among the commission?
Hi, I would just thank Commissioner Frost for bringing this up so we can hear and remark the community. And the things that I would agree with, that I think were very wise, that a lot of people said, is that there is a lot of fear in the room. And I am deeply moved, inspired by the courage of the people that spoke, particularly when they shared their personal stories, because they did, they did that at personal risk, frankly. And, but what was so courageous about it is that I think the journey that we're all on is only gonna, we're only gonna be able to lock arms is if people start understanding more. And it's not fair, but I think that the transgender community is incumbent upon you, it's not fair to help, help the community understand. And I appreciate y'all being willing to go that extra mile that, to help, to help hopefully soften hearts and to melt some ignorance. Some of it will never be melted. Some of it will never be changed. But I, I bet, I bet your stories changed some people tonight, and I thank you, I thank you for that. There's no getting around the fact that we wouldn't have asked for this reaffirmation if there wasn't some confusion. We heard confusion from the podium tonight. We heard a lot of erroneous things said about what House Bill HB2 did and didn't do. And so that's the confusion that our police have. And so it is absolutely related to House Bill 2, the fact that we're talking about just Buncombe County ordinance. And in that regard, it is, it is political. So I, I have problems with that, you know, it's in a political context. I wish it wasn't, but it is. And so that's why we're here, and obviously, there's a lot of folks that wanna talk about this. And I hope it's the beginning of a conversation and not, not the end. But thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you for who you are in God's green earth, and we are grateful for your witness and for your truth and for who you're becoming and for who you're helping us become. Thank you.
I wanna add on to what Holly said. I wanna thank you for coming. It was an incredible act of bravery to come here and share so openly, very personal things that most of us never have to think about. We don't have to think about which bathroom or where we got in trouble. And so again, thank you. I agree with Commissioner Jones. I think your stories are so eloquent and moving and brave and it's dignity that you express. Hopefully, that helped with education of people and opened, you know, warmed up some colder hearts. So I wanna thank you again, and absolutely, if it had not been for House Bill 2, we wouldn't be here having this conversation. So that's why it says what it says in the resolution.
Any other, any other comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr.?
I do appreciate everyone coming out tonight. But there's a lot of things that people, some people in this room understand. I have, my brother was gay. I don't know, who in here knows what scandals is? He opened it. It would be 35 years ago, but he's been dead for 10 years. But he, in his process, y'all need to blame Charlotte on what's happened here, not the state or anything else. When somebody brings something that, that puts it out front, that's the way you can call it, it's put out front. Charlotte put it out front, totally. We are all equal, as far as I'm concerned. I don't care if you're gay, lesbian, transgender, what. Everybody, far as I'm concerned, because I went through it with my brother, he had a good club, he never had a problem. The whole time that he owned it, city police came to scandals one time in 25 years, one time. He tried to have a safe place for people. But we are diverse in the city, in the county, and I understand that. But I was raised a long time under this, and it was a cloud originally, a long time ago, it was a big cloud. But his words to me is, "I am who I am. I don't want anything from anybody. I don't believe anybody owes me anything." And he was well-respected in this town. I have to say that. He was a good businessman. And, and we had our differences, but we upped each other and we loved each other. Putting this up again tonight is just, it's political, Holly's got it right, it's totally political. And I wished it wasn't political, because we want to be fair to our county employees, totally. You know, I care about the people that's out here in the Sodom and Gomorrah. But how can you be fair to someone that somebody puts something forward that causes something to happen to this generation of people? And I, you know, I'm, I'm not for that. And I think, you know, scandals is still open. There's a straight guy that owns that place now, but he, he enjoys the people that, that can, so that, that's, that's true. I just don't get, going back through this issue, you know, it's something that should never been put on the agenda, because there's nothing, as David Gans says, we can do. It is a ploy to try to say that we're making a resolution against HB2, not for our employees. I appreciate all of our employees. I don't care, bisexual, whatever, don't matter, as long as they're doing their job, and Ms. Green, and Ms. Stone, and Creighton, and the good people that run this, this county, as long as they're happy and they're doing their job, good deal. But I do remember one thing a long time ago, and as far as discrimination, there was a gentleman who's a friend of mine, and he ran Wachovia Bank through the Western District. We was just talking one day, and his words to me, I'd asked him a question, I said, "How long does it take to fire, to fire a woman?" And he says, "Well, basically, if you're black, male or female, or white female, it takes six months worth of documentation to be able to fire them." I said, "What about me?" He said, "I can fire you in the morning." So by being a white gentleman, then, you know, in a majority, that's where we work. I don't want anybody to be called being in a minority. I just want everybody to be who they are, and I don't want anybody hurt in any way. I see bathrooms now, I guess we're just gonna have to fix them, the work, you have male, female bathroom, it's one stall, and you can go in, and you can come out. That's, you know, if, if, that's, that way, it's, it don't matter, but it's just one person in it at a time. But I can't vote for, go back to what I voted on originally, because I think all people should be treated the same without having to put rules in. Just like I talked before, there's things that we don't need to be doing. Charlotte is to blame for what's wrong with it. And when you have most of the Congress doing it, then it just makes it even worse. So it just, that was a ploy. It worked. It's got y'all in here, it worked. And, you know, I don't want anybody in this room to be hurt. You know, I didn't want my brother to be hurt back 35 years ago, being gay, you, you had a problem. Now, it's, everybody comes here and says, "We come to this city because we feel comfortable here." Good. But just feel comfortable. You are people. We are all humans. Whatever you wanna call yourself, I feel comfortable as who I am, an old bald-headed man up here, that, that's not, probably the smartest person in the room, but I do care about the people, and I don't care. You know, I talk to anyone, I see anyone, and I go to the club down there just like anybody else. But I do have a wife, and I have children, and I'm just, I'm, that's my point. Thank you, everybody, for listening to my point.
Any other comments?
My short addition is that God made each one of us different. We have different fingerprints, we have different DNA, and God loves every single person, regardless of who you are, who you wanna be, what your orientation is, what your color is, what you believe. My God didn't want us to discriminate against anybody. That's why I voted for it three years ago, that's why I'm gonna vote for it again today. Thank you for being here. I know, I echo, shared some of your stories. It breaks my heart the way you've been treated. I'm sorry. This is something, if it's a little thing we can do, or a big thing we can do, that maybe is a light in a lot of darkness, let's strike the match, let's put the candle, let's see what happens. A lot of the arguments I've heard by the folks are the same arguments that people said about separate, but you go back in history and read the arguments, same ones, same ones, just a different year. We're not discriminating against you. We are not gonna discriminate against you in Buncombe County. Any other comments?
I would just wanna mention that our attorney has already said, the way this passes or fails, nothing changes in the county. And I appreciate Commissioner Frost and Commissioner Jones saying that this is completely political, because that is, that is the truth.
I, I didn't say that.
Well, you said it was a response to HB2, and Commissioner Jones said that it is political. So we, here we are again.
I really wanna take that. I never, I never said. You can speak after her. Go ahead, go ahead.
Here we are again, as a board, attempting to tell other elected officials how to do their jobs. Some of us are in the habit of doing that, and some of us are in the habit of not doing it. But I thank you for the honesty in stating that it was, this is a response to House Bill 2, and that this is political. I think everybody on all sides needs to understand that this is a political tool at this time.
So.
Okay, hold on. Commissioner Frost? All right, all right, let Commissioner Frost, and then Commissioner Jones.
I never used the words "political" because to me, that has a bad connotation. That has a connotation that you're doing something for political gains or future votes down the road. This is from the heart for me. My reaction to this is about discrimination of any sort. It's horrible and wrong. And yes, my first instinct about House Bill 2 was to reaffirm our Buncombe County employees that they would be protected. For one minute, if any employee thought that this would apply to them in their workplace, that's when I want to reaffirm this. So it wasn't political for me. This was from the heart and out of compassion to protect our employees. I'm sorry, we can't do more, because this is all we can do right now.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it was absolutely in a political context that HB2 came forward and was adopted and discriminates against our LGBT community. It is in a political context that our, our companies are leaving our states and we are losing jobs. It is a political context that we, that people cannot sue for their rights under state law anymore, and they have to do it in federal law, and it's more expensive and it's harder. That all happened in a very political context. That is, that is bad politics. If anybody pulls that bill up and tries to talk out why the minimum wage wasn't in there, I don't know why it wasn't in there. I'm not, I, I don't know why the, you can't sue anymore under state discrimination. I don't know why this, that. why you can't sue anymore under state discrimination. I don't know why this, that, and the other. And we watch, companies leave, jobs leave. By God, that is political. It doesn't get any more political than that. So if you think, I'll let the people in the audience judge, you know, former employees that are in this audience, I'll let them judge my motivations for the walk I have walked for 20 years. And if you want to say I'm a tool, or I'm using people as a tool, that is your helmet to put your head on. But I did it in a political context, you betcha. Did I use it for political gain? I will let other people decide that.
All right, any other discussion?
So I'm going to reaffirm my commitment to employees of Bunkin County. And there is no, there will never be something about my mouth discriminatory towards you. This is about HB2, and I will be voting against this. And that's really all I need to say.
Any other comments? Here tonight, I'll call the question. There's been a motion by Commissioner Frost, a second by Commissioner Jones, to approve the resolution as submitted, and we discussed very thoroughly tonight. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The motion is, carries by four, three vote, Commissioner Voucher, the rule, and Friar events. All right, thank you. Y'all, welcome to stay with us, if you have a second to get up. I'm not trying to run you off. You're welcome to stay. This is certainly a good opportunity. Ladies and gentlemen, we have three more matters before the board. The next one on our agenda is the resolution advancing the reappraisal schedule, followed by the resolution. It's okay to leave. I would ask that you keep your voices down, so that we can continue to do that business and continue to respect each other's opinions. As you leave, certain people feel differently about different things we discussed tonight. All right, we have a resolution on reappraisal. We have, okay, we have a resolution to solicit bids for the sale of the Ferry Road property, and then we have the approval of the closed session minutes in the board. The next on our agenda is the resolution on the reappraisal. I would suggest we go ahead. Okay, so long as you take my bed. All right, thank you. We have Gary Rocker here, or Dr. Green, to talk about the reappraisal schedule. And unless I hear differently, we will proceed through the agenda in a extraordinary way.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for letting me take a moment before Mr. Roberts begins his presentation. I put this agenda on the item, I put this item on the agenda, because I really do believe it's a good recommendation for the county. At our March 8th meeting, there was not a motion made to defer reconsideration of this resolution on the property reappraisal. We are very aware that three factors determine the property tax revenue: equity in the tax base, budget, both revenue and expenditures, and the tax rate itself. Mr. Roberts is here tonight to talk about equity in the tax base. All of us will be talking about the budget and the tax rate over the coming weeks. As a staff, we just don't have the luxury of considering a single budget year in isolation. As we put the budget together for 2017, we have to know what results to expect in '16, and we have to know the impacts of new recommendations and requests in 2018. It's only with all of this information that I can bring you a responsible 2017 budget recommendation. It is my intention to present a 2017 budget that does not require a tax rate adjustment, because we always watch at least three years of the budget. I will say that without a reappraisal that's effective in January of '17, the 2018 budget will be built on the inequitable tax base that you will hear about in Mr. Roberts' presentation. Mr. Roberts has a very good presentation for you, he's going to share with you tonight. And the presentation does a good job of clarifying the impact of sales in the different areas of the county. I'm happy to answer questions that you have now or at the end of Mr. Roberts' presentation.
All right, any questions for Dr. Green before we get from Mr. Roberts?
Somebody that did drop $16 cents for that.
Mr. Chairman and other Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to come back. I did speak with Manager Green, and we did speak on advancing the schedule. And after my last presentation, there were a few things I gleaned out of the presentation with you guys, that I did want to come back and show you some new information. I would like just to quickly cover a few things that I covered in the March meeting, and that was, what is a reappraisal? What does the law say about the reappraisal? And then should you allow us to advance the schedule, what would the schedule of the reappraisal be? I think I've answered a lot of those questions for you already, so I'm not going to dwell on a lot of those. But in my role as the assessor, I have to look at the values constantly for various reasons. Some of the main things I do is like the TR-1 report that I work closely with finance on. And when I submit that to the state, that's used for the distribution of the sales tax. So I have to make sure that all the assessments are properly done here in Bunkin County for that. Another reason that I focus on the total assessment of the tax base is for the fire report that's required by law for us to submit each year, showing the total assessment. So I look at them constantly, every year. And then finally, every year, I'm projecting revenues for every taxing district in the county. So somebody's asked me, you know, "Why do you look at the tax base so much?" It's a requirement of my job. And one of the biggest things of my job is to help manage that tax base and give you guys advice when I think it's appropriate for that. In a way, I'm kind of like that bad penny. You get a penny that's kind of scuffed up, and you use it and you buy something, but two weeks later, you get the penny back in your pocket. I'm that kind of guy. I keep coming back as the bad penny, telling you the same story over and over, hoping I allow you to use me a little. So talking about that, there is a couple of new things that I want to share with you tonight. There's a couple of slides that I have, and though I can't see that television, I have a copy up here. The first one I want to show you is the City of Asheville, and where some of the comments have been mentioned last time about the sales ratio and what it might look like. I took, instead of taking the taxing districts, I took the old townships and boards and looked at those, because I think you guys are probably very familiar with those in your own districts. So the first one I showed is the city, the incorporated area for the City of Asheville. And then there's a legend in the top left-hand corner that shows other municipalities. And what I've done on this slide is I've taken all of the sales for just the year of 2015, and to come up with what the ratio would be. So I tried to use the most current sales, not 13 or 14, but just the 15-year. And in the city slide, you can kind of see I noted the general areas. And what I want to show you as far as the slide, the point I'm trying to make with the slide, is that there is inequity among the different areas. I think the city shows it more than the others. I think there've been more market sales that are further away from the tax assessment in the City of Asheville than the other areas. I'll show you that in just a second. But I wanted to point out to you just the other municipalities too, like Black Mountain, Billmore Forest, I'll let you look at the numbers on it. Montry is still, if you look at it, the assessments there are pretty close to what the market value is on that one. Though I will say, in Montry, it didn't have the greatest number of sales, but it did have around 20. So, I mean, for Montry, that's a pretty good number of sales. It shows what a market might be. And then Woodfin had, we were filming Woodfin, you can kind of see Woodfin having the lower of those. And looking at the counties slide, okay, here it is, the county slide, same thing, there's roughly 23 taxing districts that you can see here, it goes up to 28. Number 10, beginning out, is Hawk Creek, and it's got the lowest at 76. If you look up in the Ivy District, very north, you can kind of see, that's one of the highs, 95. These rural areas are not changing as much as some of these other areas. Although, you can look at Sandy Much, that's the area, kind of similar in sense of rural area, but you can kind of see, there are sales that happen, diversity of values of those. And again, this is comparing market value to what the assessed value is. So when I talk to you about, that I see inequity, when I try to apply the tax rates for all the districts to what the tax assessment is, this kind of gives you a picture of that. There's a big variation what people are paying their tax assessments on. What assessor likes to see is markets are in the higher, 95% sales ratio are higher, meaning that we're as close to market as we can be. If I was to do a reappraisal for you, my best expectation would be around 98.5 to 99. I don't want to go over 100% and over-assess citizens, but I want to get as close to that as I can. So in looking at these maps, these two here, I wanted to point out what I see as your assessor as the inequity. Couple other things I wanted to point out is just some new information. I have spoken with the Department of Revenue, I call them my short DOR, two of the DOR guys, maybe it's Department of Revenue. You know, it is official, we're going to get a letter. I told you that last time. They've worked closely with me since Bunkin's the county that's never gotten that, we've never gone below. We've looked at a lot of different ways that they can look at that current information over the last year. I think there've been some comments, I've heard a couple with you, and I've heard some from the citizens, saying, "If the Department of Revenue does a random sampling, isn't that a small sampling to judge that by?" Yes and no. Know that, in a sense, when you look at, there's, over the last several years, there's roughly around 5,000 sales taking place. If you look at truly qualified sales, ones that are, you know, a willing buyer in it, or an able buyer and a willing seller, and they're trying to negotiate a deal in a fair way, both having, understanding the other property and its use, that tracking the legitimate sales and saying, "Of the 5,000 roughly, what are good sales you need?" No doubt, you get about 2/3 of those. So you can kind of see, you start scaling down what's there. And instead of every county across the state looking at every transaction for the Department of Revenue, they go through a systematic way of using random sampling, and they choose that information for us. And we report sometimes, as we're going through analyzing that, and saying, "What is qualified sales that the population looks small based on what you've given us?" They'll ask us to expand that, but they control that sampling. And I truly believe that even though it's a small sampling of it, it takes the best sales, the current sales, to analyze that and come up with what the sales ratio is. So when you hear somebody say, "Well, they only use 250 to 300 sales," it is small to the total number. But I think it's an accurate way of doing that. In talking to them, it does look like, "We're going to be below it, they will send a letter." Again, I don't want that to discourage you one way or the other on your decision. I just want you to know where that's at. The reason I say that to you is if a county gets to the point that they're being told, "It's time to do the reappraisal," to me, it's your, as a board, to make that decision for the citizens. You shouldn't let other jurisdictions make that for you. I'm just telling you that as an assessor, that I think destiny is in your hands, and you should set that. Now, if you choose not to do it, then you choose not to do it. But again, don't let another agency tell you that. The other thing I want to share with you that is going to happen if you choose not to do it, and again, I was told I'm straying your decision. I'm just giving you facts. You make your decision based on that. If we do not do the reappraisal in the fifth year, well, let me say it this way, next year will be the fourth year. And in my belief, we haven't seen the 16 sales yet. We're beginning to see them, but we haven't tracked them. And I can believe that we continue to increase. In the fifth year, your public utilities have a right to say, "We want to pay on the assessment ratio and not 100% on market." The Department of Revenue collects values on public utilities. Utilities are like Duke energy is here tonight, the gas company, FedEx, UPS, the railroads, those large, AT&amp;T, and now the cell phones are part of the public utilities. They have to list to the Department of Revenue, and they use different formulas to come up with what their assessments are. And then those assessments are given to the county. I have a right to question an assessment that one of them might turn in, but they are always 100% to their value based on some other things, that their balance sheets and income statements they have. But they have a right in the fifth year and in the seventh year to ask the Department of Revenue, if counties are dropping in their assessment ratios, that they be given that fair opportunity to pay at those same assessments. Now, I've never had one to do that, because we've always done reassessments every four years. My expectation on that would be that it would affect the real estate on them, and would not affect their personal property. Personal property is always 100% by uniform standard, in statute 105284. But the real estate that they own, they could request a reduction on that. And me reviewing it today and looking at it, my expectation, your public service companies right now pay around 600 million a year in value, I would expect probably 50 to 70 million to come off that tax base in that first year. I don't know what the sales ratio would look like as we get up to the seventh year. You know, I can only make expectations of, it's still going to come down around 2 to 3% a year, that it's going to keep kind of declining. But again, I'm not telling you these things to change your view. I just want to tell you the facts, that if we don't do the reassessment, what will happen, and the values that I have to submit to the county, along with the municipalities and fire districts on there. So just food for thought. I'll leave it at that. In summary, from my experience in looking at values, they're going to grow in '16. I can see some of the sales coming in. I've been going to register deeds and pulling those myself, just to look at them, comparing them to the assessments. And I can continue to see the areas that I've showed you are kind of continuing to grow the way they are. I do think, again, and again, just summarizing, that you should manage our property values. I think that's my job with you, to help you that, give you that advice. I know that one of the things that has come up is the budgeted dollars. I can't talk to you about budgeted dollars. I can collect those budgeted dollars, once you set those budgets for the services that you need. But no way can I, as a tax collector, assessor, or director, influence you in that, other than as a citizen, to tell you, "I'd like to have some." So you, as a commissioner, are responsible for those budgets, either increasing or decreasing, for me to collect for you. And you charge me once a year with that budget. I will say this, I've been in tax 29, well over 29 years, and I've heard a lot of horror stories, people who's done reassessments. I think the longer any county waits, the worse that situation gets. I think it's going to cause sticker shock to people when they see their values as they're declining, and then all of a sudden, we send out this large new assessment, they're going to probably appeal, we're going to go through and justify, in a lot of cases, that based on sales, that our values are correct. I think some of this sticker shock may cause some larger tax bills in some cases, that they could be dramatic to some people. We have some good collection rates, we've got some good procedures in place to help people that have problems, that do contact us and try to work with us on that. Again, we collect 99.7% taxes. That tells you, we're touching, a lot of people have touched tough budgets. And I only tell you these things that, from my perspective, that you're a tax director. So again, I'm encouraging you to pass the resolution, to allow us to do the reappraisal, try to keep a systematic way of doing it every four years, and manage the values. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have tonight. And hopefully, I've covered a few new items that if you had these questions or thought of, maybe I'll cover them tonight for you. of it, maybe I'll cover them tonight for you.
So Gary, the lower the number, the less they are paying, less fair share they're paying, is that fair to say?
That's fair.
The higher the number, the closer to the fair share, and I guess it could be over 100%, that probably doesn't happen a lot.
It doesn't happen a lot. You know, occasionally we see an error that we've made, or we see something, but you know, there's not very many. And if I'm going over 100, they're calling or telling me there's a problem with the property. But it is, it is fair to say that the lower the percent, I heard the assessor say one time, if the sales ratio shows that, that's kind of in the area of tax, the percent of tax you're paying. I don't quite believe that because market value is different to a lot of people, it's what it would sell for on the open market. And when you apply a tax rate to it, I think there's a factor there that you could raise the values and lessen your tax to a lot of citizens, it would have a factor of that.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a small comment. In 2013, I come in here and I put a PowerPoint up, and that PowerPoint showed 8% tax increases. And all of these areas that you're showing, Big Ivy and all of them, it was showing how much more money they were paying because the property went down a little bit, then we went up under taxes, so it was big numbers.
So maybe you're sorry, yes.
Then, when we got to Biltmore Forest, it went down under the bar. So, you know, we're not different today than we were then, Gary, because we were high then and low there. It still generated money at Biltmore Forest, but their homes went from $1 million to $800,000. That's what I look at in perspective, is, you know, we keep talking affordable this and affordable that, but the tax rate is a payment, in any way you want to look at. I pay it each year, and anybody that owns a home does. We want to do the best we can for the homes. But it still goes back to the same fact. You stood in here and told me that 25% of the people, the older people, are making payments, and you do get your 99% of your money. But, how much more can, how much more of a burden can we put on people? Especially the older people, that some of these areas in West Asheville that we're talking about, that they have homes, those are the 200,000 dollar homes, now, you know, the 400,000 dollar homes, but now the 200, yeah, and the number is changed. I just, I still can't get my head around this one either. You know, people may not like it, I might end up paying, I probably did pay more out there. But, you know, it's a fact that when you're slammed with what the city's doing, fire water and running off, garbage and everything, dirt and, these people in that district, it's killing them. And I can't back up and hurt them much more far as my say, I'm sorry. But you do a great job, your staff does a great job, and I understand your points.
Thank you. I know we spoke about it, and I respect your comments, I just wanted you to know tonight that mine's not about the budget side. You can raise it, or you can cut the budget. Mine's to collect, to assess revenue and to collect that revenue for you. Those are two roles I have. So I can only talk to you about the value side and show you that I personally believe there's an inequity, and then, you know, reappraisals help correct that by reassessing all values. You are right, how you guys set the budget, when we do a reappraisal, there will be tax increases, and there will be people that pay less, always happens, yes.
Can't hear you.
Inequity, as far as the city, the folks outside the city are in a sense subsidizing the big businesses, the hotels, and everything else within the city, when you look at these values, so to make it fair, and hopefully, you know, these people may come down and we are able to get them where their values really are, so, and I would see that, I mean, the way you laid out is very clear.
Any other discussion or questions?
We talked about this a lot last time, so I'm going to talk about it this time. I appreciate the additional information, I think percentages are fine, and I think in any of those areas, whether inside the city or outlying, there's people that's going to struggle with paying their taxes. I'm, you know, I'm not comfortable with it right now, so I'll be good, but thank you for making it very clear and providing that information for us to go through and process it, I appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Frost, Chair with second. Any further discussion?
He's about to come back for a year.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The motion is approved by a 4-3 vote. Commissioner Voucher, the rule, and Friar against. Next order of business is the resolution of intent to solicit bids for the sale of Bunkham County property. Dr. Green?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm here tonight to ask you to authorize us to sell 137.21 acres. We acquired this acreage for economic development prospects from Henderson County for a net county cost of $3.4 million. We've shown the property not only to Deschutes, which is what everybody associates with it, but with several other clients. And now that we don't have active prospects looking at the site, and probably more importantly because we do have a fairly significant hole in our 17 budget, I'm asking that you declare your intent to accept offers for this property in an amount not less than $6,815,000, and that you authorize the county manager or my designees to accept any offer that conforms with this resolution and proceed with the sales transaction in accordance with the property general statutes.
All right.
I think I can answer any questions you have about the property.
Any questions? Any comments?
I'd like to make a motion to give you the authority to sell the property.
A motion by Commissioner Frost, a second by Vice Chair Newman. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to support sale of the property. Didn't support the purchase of it, and supported the sale of it pretty quickly afterwards. I think it's, I think we need to do it. It's a difficult year. It's an asset that we can move, should have moved, and I'm excited about the opportunity to be able to do it, and if somebody buys it very quickly. But I am, I have always been in support of that property, so I will be supportive tonight to sell.
I guess I do have one little question. So, if at any time from the time we bought the property until now, even though we were negotiating with, if someone else had come along and wanted to purchase the property, we would have been privy to that and we would have entertained?
Yes, you would have been privy to that, and we did show it to other clients who were pursuing location in the community at the time.
So it was really never not for sale?
Well, but until you put it on the market, that it's actively, that we're actively trying to sell it, and, which is what we're doing today, that's the point, that it's for sale. People are not going to just assume that we've got property and they're going to come and buy it. You know, this property has to be clearly, which is what we're doing tonight, clearly put out there for sale at a specific amount, which you did, at 6.815 million, billion.
I like that.
You go, great. 6.815 million, and that's what we're officially doing tonight, is...
And if you pass this resolution, we'll start the upset bid process tomorrow.
And we're not telling her to purchase, to sell it for a certain amount, we're selling, asking her to sell it for no less than a certain amount. How much do we think that we possibly will net on this at the end of the month?
If we sell it, even just for the initial first price, 6.8 million, we will net 3.4 million, because we only have 3.4 million in it.
That we bought the property, we will net eventually 3.0, that's a really good return. Now, while we did it, it'd better have the jobs, but, and the tax base, and, yeah, that would have been better.
Any other comments or questions? And I'll call a question. All those in favor of the resolution to sell the 137 Ferry Road property, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is adopted by a 7-0 vote. Next, we have the approval of the closed session minutes. Who will be presenting that? Can't hear you.
I mean, I think maybe we should start with talking about what is required in closed session minutes, and that is what we present in closed session.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I got called a little bit flat footed, so I'll do my best here. I don't have a copy in front of me of the closed session minutes, which were adopted by this board back on April 7th. The original, I mean, we had a closed session, we had a special closed session of March of 2015. Shortly thereafter, well, as a result, there was a consensus of the board, four to three, I believe, to direct the county manager to work with Henderson County, whatnot, to communicate that we'd be interested in buying the property. Things moved quickly then, as I recall, and there was public records requests for how we made the offer, and I believe that we did produce the information and letters from Henderson County Commission that they would sell us for the 6.8 million, and a letter from Commissioner, from Chairman Gant, to Henderson County that we would offer the price they were asking. Thereafter, at the April 7th meeting, I got it from Kathy this morning, this board heard from County Manager Green about the purchase, about the process, and that Henderson County had already had a hearing and that they would accept a bid. At the same time, we, this board did approve the seven minutes, which today, the idea is to amend those minutes, to have more information, to supplement that set, and replace the already approved minutes with this new set of minutes. To answer the question that Dr. Green mentioned, I mean, what's the process, what's required of minutes? Kathy could probably explain it better, but the short note of it is, is that the minutes are the board's. Minutes that are approved are yours. They can read the way you would want them to read, based by fact, based by how things occurred. There's various practices around the state. Some recorded, some recorded just so the clerks have someone to help, something to help them recollect as to what to write down. But what the statute does say is that it's required for closed session minutes, is simply a general account of what transpired, such that someone who was not there has a reasonable idea of what occurred. So, again, that's within discretion of this board as to how you want that to read. The original minutes are short, sweetened to the point, just said that there was an economic development matter that involved a purchase of real property, and that there's consensus among the board to, for the county manager to communicate that offer. And this draft before you today, which is of course, again, as my point is, is subject to however you want it to read, is, is for your review and approval or not.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add something to that?
Yes, sir.
At your request, I did some legal research on that, and it, really, the purpose of minutes, according to North Carolina Court of Appeals, is to provide a record of actions taken by the board, and to show that the actions that were taken according to the proper procedures. If there is no action taken, then it's not even necessary to have any other record other than the fact that the meeting occurred. And there have been numerous cases out of North Carolina law where, for example, the Court of Appeals said it was proper for the minutes just to say discussion, or just to say consulted with counsel. And in this case, there was no action taken. All that they did was they just gave the county manager a sense of whether the commission would support the purchase of property, which was done later in an open meeting, when everyone expressed their opinion about it, and it was passed by the 4-3 vote. So, I don't necessarily think that the coming back and approving the minutes now, I don't really think particularly where there was no action taken, that there has to be anything added to that at all. That's my take.
All right, sir. Thank you. Is there any questions or discussion?
We don't have to make alterations, but we certainly can.
Yes. I'm just saying that it's not required under the law.
And I think that...
You know, because as Mr. Frost said, you know, they're your minutes.
Okay, thank you. So I, it's no secret that I would like these minutes to be more reflective of the discussion that was had during that emergency closed session. So, to that end, I would like to make an amendment. I think that in these minutes, that we should include some of the statements that were made, and the reasons why the property was purchased. It was to control what goes there. I want you to reflect that. Commissioner Newman said?
Yes, ma'am.
If that is put into there, if that's on the argument, I can't, I can't say that that, you know, I can't, so it's not in my handwritten record. I would find it just a...
Ms. Hughes, what I'm looking at in front of me, is this all that was in your handwritten minutes? So if this changes at all, you won't sign it? Does anyone dispute what was said in the meeting? That there was a comment made about controlling what was going there? And that we wanted to not allow Jack Cecil to build homes there?
I don't think there's any dispute that the purpose for acquiring the property was to control the site and were to hopefully have Deschutes founded Bunkham County, make a $100 million plus investment, and create over 100 excellent paying jobs. I don't think that that's in dispute, and I don't think that was in dispute that, when that was discussed, that the idea that that $100 million investment and 100-plus paying jobs was considered by, at least those that supported it, as clearly the highest and best use of the property, if we could achieve that. So, I actually don't disagree with what you're saying, is controlling it for Deschutes as an economic development opportunity was the purpose of acquiring the property.
But it goes back, yes, that was what was said. The words were, it's got a beautiful, it's beautiful land with a beautiful green light, and we need to control it. That was the words.
I don't remember that.
But the fact is...
I don't remember those words at all.
Well, if you don't, but that's exactly what I heard, and we might not change anything. But the fact is, we didn't own the property, and we spent $18,000 on that partial court boring for a possibility of GE kind of. This was right before the Deschutes deal. So, I basically said in the meeting that if somebody don't have a little money, we don't need to be going and jumping in front of a potential buyer in Henderson County to purchase this property. So that's, if Ms. Green has shown it to some other clients, that means that I guess we weren't dependent on the Deschutes to kind of, and that's...
Commissioner Friar, it's a piece of property we've shown several people for a number of years. What happened was, Henderson County got a buyer for it. We were one of two for Deschutes, and we needed to secure that piece of property. There's a piece of legislation that was passed by the General Assembly that clarified how...
that clarified how it had to be purchased and how the monies had to be split. But at the time we bought it, we had been, had documentation in hand that said we were one of two for Deschutes, and it was going to go, and we know now it was going to a nonprofit school.
But, Ms. Green, was the original Deschutes site across from Belton Baptist Church on that farm that has conduct or apartments on it?
As long as that property, we called that the Roberts Farm property, was available, we showed it to everyone, too. We showed people any, if there was parcels of a hundred acres or more, that's what they wanted to see. We showed them everyone that we had that Deschutes was interested in this particular piece of property. It's the only one that they wanted to do drawings on, on the Ferry Road piece. They were not interested, Roberts Farm is a challenging piece of property, and now it's covered with apartments, but Deschutes had made it clear to us that they were very interested in the Ferry Road property. And I think in the, in March, in the closed session, I clarified that for everyone.
You told us, the day before individually, the company name and who was interested in it and the purpose of buying the property was strictly for that company?
Because it was an unusual transaction, we shared a lot of information that, assuming it would remain very confidential, about what we were asking you to do, so that you could make a more informed decision about the risk. And so, you did get a lot of information in those cluster of a few days that told you exactly who it was, what we knew about them, everything that we had. So, it's, that was very unusual to be able to release that much, but I was asking you to make an unusual decision.
I'd like to. I think, or I feel very comfortable, that the clerk's portrayal of the meeting is very accurate, and I'm not comfortable changing anything to the point that makes our clerk uncomfortable, because it wasn't in her writing, or she did not write it down. And I'm very comfortable that this is, the gist and the spirit and the direction, and it portrays it very accurately.
Can't hear you back here.
I'll turn it on. Hang on, we'll turn it on. Got me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I'm gonna be very, very careful here, because these are our minutes. And I wanna make sure that I don't put Ms. Hughes in any kind of position whatsoever in this conversation. So, as far as, when I first saw the minutes, I did, I felt like there could be more in there about the opposition of it. And in my regulation of my conversation, I think I said that I was, of course, I was not supporting the incentive to the beer and alcohol industry anyhow. But on the purchase of the property, I said I was not comfortable with speculating on land purchase, to which another commissioner, you know, didn't like that word. But I'm pretty sure that I said that. And I was wondering if you had, if there was something to the spirit of that, that you had in there that would show more opposition to that? Is that anywhere in your notes? Something...
It says, "Not in favor, passing for an examination period before the purchase was binding."
Yeah, I didn't ask that.
Consensus to purchase a property was split.
Okay, can I finish it?
Mm-hmm.
My conversation was... So, I, again, I wanna, I wanna make sure that the opposition that I stated was in the minutes. And I've never, I've never had a problem, you know, this is...
Get your mic up, sir.
If you see the minutes out, you know, and I have something, I'll email you back and say, "Yeah, I remember this," and you're, boom, I mean, you just, you just put it in there. So, that's kinda where I'm at. I just kinda felt like that there could've been more of the opposition in there. And so, that would've been my comment back to you on this. So, just wondering if you had that, and if you would be comfortable in adding that. If so, then I will ask that to be done.
Can't hear you.
I could say right now if those words are actually in there or not, honestly. There's a lot of stuff in there that does not, and then it's back and forth that doesn't really go anywhere, frankly, honestly. I'm not feeling all that, because as well, I believe on my side, I'm not sure. I'm not, I'm not holding it. So, that's why I'm thinking that.
To get to the issue of the primary motivations of purchasing the property, and I don't really need to give you a spot, but I think there's only one way to kind of get clear on it. So, when you came forward with this offer, I mean, with this proposition, was the primary intent for us to control that Ferry Road property?
The primary...
Without, without the Deschutes?
The primary intent was to avoid Henderson selling it, because we had an economic development client that was very, very interested in. I mean, to the point, a lot of drawings were done, and we were led to believe we were one of two at that point. So, Deschutes was the main reason for it. We didn't buy speculatively for, to just hold. We bought it because we really believed that we had Deschutes. And we had been led very much by Deschutes to believe that, believe that. And they visited the property many times. I mean, after that purchase, we did a lot of drawings to help them try to locate the facility the way they wanted on the property. So, when I came in there, it was, it was because we had a client, not a speculative, just buy so we can defend, I mean, so we can own this property. It had been owned for years by either Henderson or Ashville, so it's a, it's a long history.
Ms. Hughes, I respect your position, but we could still choose to amend the minutes and vote on them anyway. So, you know, we each have a role to play. We answer to the taxpayers, who, out of this ordeal, are footing the bill for nearly $7 million worth of property. As far as speaking to intent, I know what I heard in that meeting that day. And I know that certain people may have had certain intents, but I know what was clearly said. And clearly, it was said that we just need to control the property. We've gotta buy the property now, we've gotta control it, we need to control what goes there. We do not want Jack Cecil building houses on this land. That's what was said. And I would like this strong, because this has been nearly, this has been a year-long ordeal. Nearly, again, nearly $7 million of taxpayer money was spent. I would like to amend the minutes, so that they are representative of the nature of the opposition. There were concerns about speculative land buying, there were concerns about comments that were made, and there were concerns that no contracts or letter of intent had been acquired. So, my request, my desire is to be as open as we can be. And let's be, let's be as transparent as possible. Let's provide the whole truth, not slivers of the story, to the public who is very interested in this. And, hold, 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 one second.
Just, just running off, the road, Commissioner, continue to the next one.
Thank you, Commissioner Frost, I will slip through the thought. So, my desire is to tell the whole truth. And I would like to say that if these minutes, we had an opportunity last year to vote on recording the closed sessions, which is not an unheard of proposition, if we recorded our closed sessions, we wouldn't have to have this debate. It would take this discussion and this debate out of it. We would have them, they would be just as open in proper time as our public meetings are. And that's the point. The point of closed sessions is not to indefinitely conceal the whole story or the whole truth. The point of closed session is for us to have discussion protecting a company or, depending on what the matter is, its personnel or not. But the ultimate goal is to allow all of that information to come out. It's not to permanently conceal what goes on in the backroom secret meetings.
Okay. So, the county manager, who has been our county manager and led this community for many, 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 many years, has said the purpose she came to us with the sole reason that Deschutes was interested, we were one of two communities. To say anything different is questioning firm's credibility, John Creighton's credibility, and EDC.
That is absolutely not true.
Oh, then, go ahead, Commissioner Frost.
We all knew, the whole purpose for buying that property was to secure it for Deschutes. There was no other reason was to secure it for Deschutes. It wasn't to put brainwaves in, it wasn't to be speculative about it. It was very clear, because to say anything else in the pugency integrity of everybody sitting here, because we all agreed, we were getting that property to hopefully get this huge economic investment in jobs in our community. And to say anything else, to say that it was speculative, to call it a fairy tale, is wrong and attacks everybody's credibility, including Dr. Green, who came to us and said, "I am doing this because we have this huge opportunity here."
I don't, I'm not taking issue with the county manager.
What are you trying to say? Who was being speculative about it? Who was saying it was speculative?
I said, I said in the closed session that we were speculative. I said in the closed session that we were speculating on property with taxpayer dollars. I said that.
Buying property without a contract, without, without a buyer is real estate speculation.
And that doesn't, that has nothing to do with...
My word was, this is amazing.
Hold on, let me finish. Let me finish. That has nothing to do with staff. And we continue to bring them up, and I think that is unfair to them. This is our decision, we made those decisions in that, in that closed room. Nobody else here. It is the commissioner's decision in closed session. In an open session, we vote based on what we think is the best thing for us to do for the people we represent. In that case, there was, there was four that was supportive of moving forward with purchasing that prom, purchasing that property on the promise of a company coming. That was the problem that I had, that I had with it. When I saw the minutes, I said I would've liked to have a little bit more in there about the opposition. And that's probably the first word that I went out when I, when I spoke to Ms. Hughes, because I usually do, I read them every time, and I usually make some sort of comment, and she can, she can say that. But to continue to pit us against staff is unfair, unfair.
Well, I still...
They do a great, they do a fantastic job, we all agree with that. And we just have to make those decisions, so, you know, my, that, my position was...
Then, I guess I'm really puzzled what you're trying to say.
Commissioner, Commissioner Dr. Frus... I'm getting very rapt up, because it is late. The, I just, when I saw, I had mentioned, that was the first thing that came to my mind, that, and the point, the main point that I was making in the closed session is that I felt like that we were, that it was a speculative purchase. And that I wasn't going to support it anyhow, because of other reasons, but that it was a speculative purchase, and we had not done that before. Our offerings had been in cash, and we had a contract signed, you know, and they were locked in and everything, and this was not the case. And so, and that's a short, short statement, in that, that I said that it was speculation, and I think it was near the end of it, actually. And that was my opinion that I was stating. And when I, when I read them, I felt like there should be more opposition in there, and that was why I mentioned it, Ms. Hughes, prior to this meeting. Commissioner Frost?
I guess I'm puzzled at what was the backroom deal, when in other economic development projects, we require property.
Please say that.
No, no, I'm just speaking now, nothing, nothing on here. I'm just saying, this is not the first time property required...
Can you talk into your mic?
...in economic development areas, this is frequently done. And I'm just puzzled over what we hear, backroom deals. I don't know what the accusation is. If it's not that the county manager did not present this as only Deschutes, then what is the confusion? She presented us with the idea that we had to, if we wanted Deschutes, wanted that investment, we had to buy this, we could buy this property. That was my regulation of all of it. It was never to have it for any kind of speculation, the whole goal. And we're pretty excited at the thought of all these jobs coming to our community. That is my memory. I think the minutes are very accurate.
I'm gonna make them, I want to, I think we should tell the whole truth. And so, I would like to make a motion to amend the minutes to include, in the nature of sort of expressing the strong opposition and the details that matter to those of us who didn't go along with this, I would like to amend the minutes to include that we don't want Jack Cecil to build houses here.
But I think the Cecil family is on the land.
I'm not...
Is there a second? Well, if we're gonna be honest, and we're gonna put it all out there, I would probably want us to consider the comments of another commissioner that talked about this whole thing was a joke, this whole thing was a fairy tale, there was nothing to it, and in fact, called the president of the company and asked him when they were gonna make their mind up. Right at a critical time, when we were negotiating to buy Deschute, buy, buy, but right at the time, we were right in the middle of heavy negotiations, and we had an offer, we had a, who knows, you'd have to ask Deschutes whether we were one or two, but we were certainly in the top two. I don't think you can select, any, anytime you do minutes, I don't think you can pick part of it, the part you like, and don't put the part you don't like.
Well, I agree completely.
And did you record the meeting?
The things that you're, the things that, the things that you're referencing, I didn't say in a closed session, I said them, I was very public about that.
Oh, I know, so, Deschutes knew, too.
Yeah.
They certainly knew what was going on here. So, I think that was something that was discussed also, that we probably wanna have all that in there, too, if we're gonna do part...
Are we discussing the minutes?
Yeah.
That, we can discuss that.
You know, I called the president of the company and asked him...
I absolutely did. But what is that, does that have to do with these minutes?
Well, we discussed it during the minutes.
No, we did not discuss that in this meeting.
We discussed it at a later time. If you're gonna be transparent, you're gonna, I think you have to...
I just wanna be clear that that won't be included in the minutes from March 17.
Well, it wasn't in March, but it certainly was when the three, the three commissioners put it on the agenda to sell the property. At that point, right before that, and we were still running, there was, there were conversations about fairy tales, there were conversations about, "There is no prospect here," when we had documentation from Michael Alon, who's the president of Deschutes, that he was interested, from his agent.
So, you did have documentation, okay, because I didn't. So, between March and when I, when I called the president, Michael Alon, I didn't have direct, I had, I asked...
Well, I didn't, I distracted my staff.
Oh, well, okay, well, you just said you had documentation, and that was the point.
Who's that?
That was the point. For seven months, multiple decision dates, we were told, came and went. For seven months, I, we discussed this, having something in writing, a letter of intent, a contract, something. There was nothing. On more than one occasion, the president of Deschutes talked openly to local media. And I decided that, after encountering tho, those things, and the large settlement, the six-ish million dollar innocence commission settlement, that it was not inappropriate to reach out to the president after seven million... to reach out to the president after seven million almost dollars of our county citizens' pay. My loyalty and who I answer to is the citizens of Buckham County. It was not too much, after se, waiting seven months for something, to politely ask for something. And since we're working along this vein, let's not overlook the multiple media reports coming out of DeShutes that have said, the phone call, the resolution, none of that had anything to do with their decision not to come here.
I don't know if it did or not at the time, I mean, we, it's speculative, we don't know.
How do you not, I have the report right here. I have the...
I would say, I, I was, I told Roanoke I was glad they got it, but I think that's just being a gentleman, after the fact. You know, I think, you know, what we did talk about was we need to get everything out, and I don't mind doing that right now. I'm not gonna vote to amend minutes, because they don't have to be, but I do, I do think, and I did tell all of you at the meeting, that everything should come out. And so this is the time, that's kinda what I envisioned, I know it's 11 o'clock, but I think, hey, that's just when it happened. So, there were a lot of things that went on, there, I know that myself, I'm speaking for myself beyond any doubt, I, I was totally interested in buying the property because of DeShutes, and no other reason. I would not have bought it otherwise. I, in fact, remember some conversations over the weekend, before we instructed the county manager to buy it, that I wasn't gonna buy it. And I was convinced that morning, when, when, when the county manager went and spoke to us two by two about benefits, which would be, we got 3.4 million from the city of Asheville immediately. So essentially, we bought property, 6.8 billion purchase price for 3.4 million, and resolved a longstanding dispute between Henderson and Henderson County and the city of Asheville, all at the same time, while we had the possibility of getting DeShutes. And in fact, that is in the minutes, that we're, that we're prepared. At that point, I said we got a five win, five-point win here, when we bought it. Now, understand, there's no question, you're on the record, the three of you are on the record opposing this, and I respect that, that's fine. You know, if you wanna talk about everything, let's talk about everything. You're in the public, we're on public record right now, and it's...
We go into a closed session, and we have somebody that's not part of our team in the closed session, wanting to sign paperwork, that we're, we're not gonna say anything about anything. I swore that I wouldn't say nothing. I never said DeShutes one time in this whole process until the day that it went down. But the one thing I didn't know, I thought we was buying the property, maybe, I guess, to draw the shoots, but I didn't know that we was gonna give them the property to give here. I did not know it. And that was in one meeting back here, and I had, I had mentioned Mr. Creighton, how much we're giving them to come, and if the other one was a million dollars, and then I hear that we're giving them $7 million worth of property to traddle around here. That was the biggest surprise that I've had, and I don't know who else on this board had that surprise, but I didn't have a clue.
Let's get that out.
When you say, when you say you're gonna try to get some, something to get somebody, well, if you give them the property for what it's, you know, sell it to them, that's money back in the bank, and then when they bring the product, then we make the money off the self, the property tax on the property that, that they have, then that way we give them their incentives back. But just giving it to them upfront, that was county taxpayers' money, is something that I couldn't say, I never seen anything out of them, period.
I, I don't ever remember a discussion that we were gonna give them the property and just tie it over to, "Mr. Creighton, am I mistaken about that? Was there ever an intent that you ever revolved in where we reached, gonna give them the property without any recompense from them, or in jobs or sales tax or property taxes?"
We never handed out anything for free upfront, we just never have done that. And while we might have negotiated a lot of different ways and a lot of different proposals so they ended up with the land, there was not a deal definitely on the table. We knew they wanted the land, but we never would have titled it over to them, and never told them we titled it over to them. Maybe we would have leased it to them, but the deal didn't come all the way through for us to work those deals out, but there was never a commitment to them to give them the land upfront.
Well, there was no discuss, continuing discussion of the deal if we didn't have the property, because we didn't have anything else comparable, and DeShutes was gone, isn't that true?
That, that's, to be honest with you, I would never have brought it to you to buy Henderson County, going to be in, they had a sale to someone, and we really needed that property for DeShutes. We believed everything they were telling us, and I think that they did, they meant it when they were telling us. So we bought it strictly for that, because it was going to be sold by Henderson County the following month.
It was on their agenda to be sold.
It was on their agenda to sell it.
The day, the day after, or the day before, not, right around the time we instructed you to buy it. And then I signed the letter on behalf based on the instruction. But, but I will say, the Commissioner Farr, Commissioner Little, Mr. Belter were against this, and I think that is, that is pretty clear in the minutes, and I don't think there should be any doubt about that publicly, that they were always against this for various reasons, and they can speak for themselves, but I don't think that's ever been disputed. I think if you're trying to put words in, in my mouth or someone else's mouth about, "Well, that's why I bought it," I'm gonna object to that, 'cause that didn't happen. It didn't happen for me, I don't remember it from anybody else, I don't know. I, it was a year ago, I don't remember everything about it, and so I can't say, I don't have a photographic memory or a total recall. But I don't think that was ever the intent of, at least the three, Mr. Franz, vice chair, or Commissioner Jones, when I talked to them about it, that they wanted to just buy it just for fun, which is what you suggested.
I'm simply repeating what I heard in that meeting, period.
You haven't recorded it?
And this, this is a perfect example why we should record our closed session meetings. Perfect example. We don't have to have a debate, we don't have to say, "Well, I don't remember this person, that person." I remember, there's no doubt in my mind, certain comments that were made, and implication that were made. And you're right, I have been, I've had grave concerns from the beginning on this.
I understand your position, I, I take the same position.
That's why I've had the mind.
Let me finish, I'm talking. The, when you brought it up last year about this time, to record, the same reasons that I would be opposed to that today were valid then. Economic development does not want sensitive information getting out. Somehow it got out. We don't know how, I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody, and maybe it was LeVanne talking to them on purpose, but it got out. And they held it against us, because we were asked to sign confidential agreements, confidentiality, which some commissioners did, some did not, at a meeting. And the confidentiality agreement basically said, "You will not talk about this until we make a decision."
Well, we did, David, you didn't get a proper...
Can't hear you.
...company, because this property, you didn't use the name.
Never did.
No, never did.
You did say your company, but it's not, it's profit, on, on television.
Right. We never said, we never revealed the name of the company, which is what we're...
I never used, I mean, I had to talk to the people at Home to Property next to it one to know what it was.
Commissioner, if you remember, Henderson County had announced that we were buying this, in their meeting, if you go back and look at their minutes, they announced that we were buying this for an economic prospect to sell to them. So, I mean, I think there was some information out there, I'm always very careful, because I think we do have a confidentiality requirement, and we talk about closed session thing, and I think everybody can agree on, that we have to...
We've got a deal, we better keep our mouths shut. We're all sworn to it, and we're not going to be signing stuff like that, it don't matter if we know it, if it's, if it's banned, we don't know how, it don't matter. If we, you know, if we don't have, if the people don't have the trust in us by being sworn, then there's no trust whatsoever, is what I was getting.
Well...
I have not said a word, and I did not say anything to anybody about the name of this company.
Mr. Teague sent us an email at one point that said there was concerns about DeShutes, that things were being revealed. And I don't know, that's their, that's their, I don't know, I don't know. I, I can't, I can't speak about anybody but me. But nevertheless, that was a concern, and this was a viable economic prospect, to the tune of $135 million investment, 135 million jobs. So, to me, I'm comfortable, and I have been for 20 years, keeping confidentiality, and, and then, at the end, if you wanna talk about it, fine, we'll talk. Now we can talk about it, it's, it's done deal, it's over. We have the property, that we have 3.5, 3.4 million in, and we're, we're, we're just, I think we just voted 7-0 to sell it. Now, we wanna talk about details, and I think it's a good time to talk. Anybody that wants to talk, I would encourage you, because that's, that's transparent.
Well, one thing I wanna, would like to add in this, in terms of, hopefully, we will have other economic development offers, but I think it's important that we don't impose what our timelines, we think the timeline should be on the prospect. I mean, I think it's fair to have a conversation, to check in about timelines and communicate, but that is not ours to control. And, and in fact, that, that is problematic to, for that type of intervention. So, I mean, how often has a deal hit the timeline that you expected? I mean, probably 50% of the time, maybe, in a good day, you know?
That would be a lot better number than I would have used, because rarely do they actually make the timeline they start with. They're off a few months in either, either direction. And I would also say that it's not over till they announce they're going somewhere, because we've had them, they have told us they're going somewhere else, and they now live in our community, and, and for a lot of people, so it's not over until, until they break ground somewhere.
So, elected officials determining when the clock goes off, and, and muddy in the water for the future, I, I would hope that we would, you know, back off of that going forward, first of all. Second of all, one of the things I've learned in my age of 54 years old, is to try to not, and I'm not perfect at it, and I've probably even done wrong tonight, but it's best not to try to judge the motivations of other people, because more than likely, the only person that knows those motivations is that person. So that's been so much of the problem tonight on all these issues, is that somebody other than the person somehow magically knows what really happened, and what, what secrets, and the hidden agendas, and the, the real truth, and not slivers of the truth. Like, I think that I don't wanna judge other people's motivations just what they say, and I would appreciate other people not judging my motivations, or if they wanna know, ask me, I probably will tell you. So, that's, that is just as an aside, to probably, but the truth of the matter is, is, I, you know, if we had, I think if tonight proves anything, is like, we, recording the minutes is not gonna help one iota. It, we will, this is a sad, we are just a sad little reflection of our bigger, you know, country's issues. And it, and I do think, I think it's very sad. And, and I, you know, I would like to figure out a way that we can kind of move through it, so we can do the people's business. Because, you know, the people that I'm concerned about, in addition to the taxpayers, who incidentally is not, are not gonna lose a dime of money, they're gonna, they're gonna have more money, because we're gonna sell it for, anyway. And it, which is not why we did it, but will be the outcome, ironically. So, in addition to being concerned about the taxpayers, I am really concerned about those 130 people in our community that would have had a good job if we hadn't gone half-cocked. I mean, those people are really short-changed by folks having their own agendas, and, and me clearly not understanding the motivations. But I would say going forward, as an elected body, it would probably do everybody a lot of good for us to not judge other people's motivations for while we're up here, and to remember that all of us care about the taxpayers. Republicans and conservatives don't have, y'all aren't the only ones. We care too. And I care about the people that want jobs too. So, that's what I have to say about it.
Hang on, let me, let me handle this real quick. First of all, I have been very specific about what I said. I, I haven't put, projected anything on anybody, I've been specific about what I heard, what was said, and what I've done. Now, to the point, number one, can't lose something you don't have. So, we'll clear that up. But right here, Aaron Adelson, he's 13, just talked to Mr. Fish, I think he's the president of the company, and he says it had nothing, duh-duh-duh-duh, it, I don't think made any impact whatsoever on our decision. Let's see here. Whereas, I think it was Tony Kiss in the last couple of days, that also mentioned the motivations after talking to the company, it's why they chose Roanoke, and it had nothing to do with any commissioner.
Chair, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Commissioner.
And just an observation, I think everyone's spoken and had chances for, share their perspective on this, so that's great. I have not spoken yet, I'd like to just say a couple of things.
Sure.
And in my view, if there's a motion on the floor, we vote that, if passes were done, it doesn't, it'll be a little motion to resolve this issue, but, so just, I just have to share my perspective on this. I think the reason we acquired the property was for one reason, and one reason only, DeShutes represented a very unique and significant economic development opportunity for Buckham County, the kind that come along only rarely, and we were clearly had an excellent chance to win that project. Acquiring a piece of property that's worth almost $7 million for half that price is not what I think most people would consider speculation, it was a good investment. It will actually be key to filling, have, the fact that we now have this property that we can market will be a key solution to addressing a real serious problem we have in the budget this year, that was created because of the lawsuits generated against the county by the former sheriff's corruption. DeShutes treated Asheville with total respect and profession, and in a very professional way. I mean, I respect people's differences of opinion about whether it was the right thing to buy the property in the first place or not, but I think anybody who thinks that this board noticing that we were gonna immediately sell the property to whoever would buy it, at the key times that DeShutes was making their final decisions about which community to focus on, that that did not hurt us. And I think anybody who thinks that having political leaders go on social media and call these companies interested in our community a fairy tale, that that doesn't really hurt us. DeShutes is gonna be nice about Asheville, just like we're gonna be complimentary towards Roanoke. But if we had treated any of the other kind of economic development prospects in the way that DeShutes was treated, we wouldn't have won these other big deals either, with GE, Linnamar, others. So, and, and people can disagree with it, but that is, that is my opinion. I think we have to work together on these economic development prospects, and that's not what happened in this case. And so I just wanted to say my two cents on it too before, but, thank you.
All right. Any other, we have a motion to amend, is there any other discussion? And I think this is a very appropriate time to talk about anything anybody's come to mind about the DeShutes transaction, or lack thereof, and purchase of the 130...
And, and just one last, one last comment, just sort of being focused on, you know, and this was, you know, a while ago, so I don't think any of our memories are perfect about what, what happened there, but I, I certainly did believe that DeShutes would be a better outcome than, than a, you know, a subdivision. There are really, I believed it then, I still believe that. I, you know, if I've referenced any specific developers then, honestly, I just don't remember that, but I think, I think most of the, a lot of the people in the economic development community, including people like Jack Cecil, would agree, getting DeShutes here would have been a fantastic outcome, would have applauded Buckham County for working to make that happen. If, you know, now that DeShutes isn't gonna be locating in Asheville, we are inviting the broader investment and development community to, you know, take a look at this property, it is a great property, and if, and someone like that's interested in it, we welcome them to, you know, to, to talk to us. So, that's never what it was about, it was about trying to, to win the DeShutes project.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to withdraw my initial motion, and I would like to make a motion to, because I understand it, it wouldn't have passed anyway. I would like to amend, I would like to have this discussion, that is clearly in the public and recorded, and has referenced the closed session, I would like to have this portion of our meeting tonight included in the minutes for the closed session that we're talking about from last March. about from last March.
It's in the minutes now.
Well, I think that it's in the minutes for tonight's meeting. I would like to amend the minutes from the March closed session to include these minutes.
But can you do that?
It'll be in tonight, if you're back.
Well, it's, it's just, you can't record something that didn't happen on that day. You can record what happens today. You can't go back and record it as if it happened in March.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Wait, no, there's actually a motion, well, okay, you have a three motion, you've got another motion, do you want to pursue that?
Absolutely.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Okay, there's a motion to put the April 5, 2016 minutes into the minutes of, what day? April, what? April 7?
It was March. March, so it's...
March 17, 15 minutes, is that right?
March 17th, yeah.
Okay, there's a motion, and there's been a second. Is there any further discussion of that motion? I just don't think we can, personally, I can't vote for it, because it's not something that we'll have. Okay, so, all right, legally, okay.
Well, is, Mr. Frid, I'll, I'll yield to your legal...
I agree with what Doctor Reed said, I don't think you can retroactively put future minutes, now future, now current minutes into the past, I don't think...
I don't see how that's any different than running an amendment.
I'm going to rule, I'm going, okay, you got your advice, I'm going to rule this. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion is defeated by four to three, three to four vote. Yeah, no, I kind of know everybody. And that would be Commissioner Frost, Commissioner Vice Chair, Chairman, and Commissioner Jones against.
So I'd like to make the motion now to approve the closed session minutes as they're printed.
The motion is a second.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Frost, the second by Commissioner Jones, to approve the minutes as they have been prepared by our clerk. Is there any discussion of that motion?
Yeah, I'm just saying to the clerk, I appreciate what you do, and the job you do, and I really appreciate you being here to let me out at night for all this, for all this discussion, so.
Any other discussion or corrections? All right, there's a motion to, we have in front of us, everybody understand what it is? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion is approved by four to three vote, Commissioner Collins will roll for our again. Let's see, we have four appointments, we have, we discussed a three session a little bit, and I don't think we came to a consensus, so we have it on the agenda, what is our, our...
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion of the Women's Commission, I hear these applicants have sent us their, because their criteria are both...
Okay, there's been a motion to refer this back to Women's Commission and get a... Wasn't it different, does it differ? Okay, Alan, would you, your, Mr. Frost, your proposal is to send this back to the Women's Commission to get a sorting, the board is needed on that commission, based on a overwhelming interest, okay?
The, the industry thing that she said too, is to ask for maybe, you know, 12. Because I treat, to be honest with you, I've never been 100% humble with boards asking more, telling, because it feels like this odd pressure to point to the board want, and most of the time, that's right, but every once in a while, it feels, it feels insider-y. So this is a good idea, to just kind of have like, get their names, and then we can kind of go from there.
Okay, there's been a motion to ask for 12 recommendations based on their needs and all, from the Women's Commission. Is there a second from the Women's Commission?
Second.
Okay, there's been a second by the Vice Chair. Is there any further discussion of this motion?
I just want to be clear, what you're asking is that they will make a recommendation back to ask for 12, that they will narrow it down within themselves.
At the, at the point, do you need those 12 and pick nine?
We haven't gotten to that step yet, but I think that's, that's the first step, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so it's just not to, you know, I just wanted to make sure, make sure before, you're not automatically saying interview them, you're just saying you want to narrow it, then make a decision on interviewing. So we're not deciding interviewing at all tonight when we go.
Right.
Unless the board chooses to do so. The motion is not that. The motion is just send it back, get 12 names for nine vacancies, all right?
Yeah.
And then we, then we go from there. May or may not interview, depends on the board's decision at that point. Okay, does everybody understand where we are? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor of a motion by Commissioner Frost, second by the Vice Chair, to send the list to the Women's Commission and come, ask them to refer us 12 candidates for the nine positions that we have. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then that motion carries by seven to zero vote.
I have a, I'd like to make a motion to, for the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Board to appoint John Bernard, Robert Tomaso, Lo, Spike Graham, Marcia, Cefian, and Peggy Franke, and I apologize for putting her in there.
That's better than I can do, okay. Are there any other nominations? I'll just go ahead and ask, is there a, if you, what, one thing, Commissioner Belter has a motion, I'll second it. All those in favor of those individuals, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And they are appointed by seven to zero vote. Then we have the planning board, we have three vacancies, three people, I think they are current, are they all current, reappointments, I believe.
Yep.
All right, are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to approve the individuals up for reappointment? Motion by Commissioner Frost, second by the Vice Chair, any other discussion? Any other candidates? All those in favor of reappointing those individuals, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, and they are reappointed. That's all appointments, and no closed sessions, is that correct? Then we have an announcement, our next meeting will be April 19, record meeting beginning at 4:30 PM at 200 College Street, Room 326, and any other business to come before the board? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Frost, second by Commissioner Frye, all those in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.